All right. Good evening, everyone. This is our monthly workshop meeting for the Springfield Township Board of Commissioners. And the way our Monday workshop typically works, we go through issues and discussions in a little more detail. No official action takes place tonight. Any official action or votes would take place Wednesday night in our regular business meeting. We typically start with anything that requires our engineers' expertise and voice. So we'll do that first, and then I'll come back to the audience, just poll people for what people are here. And we'll try to hit those items first if you've come out tonight.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Lee. Happy end of summer, it feels like, but we're getting there. Not a whole lot happening this month around town. Thought I would take this opportunity to bring you up to speed on some of the construction projects that are ongoing, completing, and starting over the next couple of weeks. Recall that you guys approved a couple of years back a project to increase the parking capacity at LaSalle High School. That project's been going on most of the summer. It's about complete now, looking pretty well. LaSalle, I went to compliment them for paying close attention to neighbor concerns. There were a couple of neighbors who were most adjacent to those parking lots, and I think the school did a good job in talking to those people and making sure that their concerns were addressed. So that has gone very well. Similarly, remember the board authorized the construction of some new storm sewer in Avondale.
Because I'm still seeing the images on the screens back there.
Yeah, there's something on the screen still.
A gentleman playing the saxophone.
Right. Yeah, that's good. You got it down. It's the way between here and there.
Okay. All right. So are we back live? More people at home? Just those people are removed?
We have eight people.
Okay. Peter, you're not pulling prank skin, are you?
No, not again.
Trickster.
Yeah, goodness gracious. So at any rate, over in Avondale, remember there was a storm sewer improvement project that was taking place. Whenever we open the road, there's always some concerns about things we may or may not find, but thankfully that project went very smoothly. Our contractor did a very clean and thorough job. Avondale was actually milled yesterday and hopefully paving that area tomorrow. So.
Next week.
Next week.
Uh, maybe Wednesday.
Wednesday this week. So anyway, the paving project is moving along nicely. Ian obviously is all over that piece of work, and so things are going well.
Neighbors were very grateful for that. A few of them were at National Night Out and expressed their gratitude for attention to that street.
That has been a little bit of a problem for the longest time, and so this is a great opportunity to get that cleaned up. So wonderful. I'm glad that worked out. Mount St. Joe's Academy, recall they have a new fieldhouse project that they are talking about for a number of years now. That is actually going under construction, actually starting some earthmoving today. We have our official pre-construction meeting on Thursday afternoon. I think Andy's office has all the documents, forms, escrow accounts to be recorded, but that is all in place. And I'm looking like it's going to be starting at earnest, like I say, this week. WB Homes over Hawes Lane, obviously that's moving along quite well. The sidewalk on Hawes is now complete, and so we've been working with WB Homes and hopefully continue conversations with the school district, opening that sidewalk for the kids for this coming start of school. There is some finished grading to be done on the side of the road. There is some things that are taking place, but we hope to be able to coordinate that with the school, with WB Homes and their contractors to keep those kids safe as they're moving back and forth in front of that construction site.
Did Tim, did they give you a schedule for the improvements to the park area in the back yet?
Mr. Taylor asked me that question this morning, and no, they have not. But on my agenda for tomorrow, Pete, is to call the WB, set a meeting up with them. And as Mike was saying to me earlier today, he doesn't want to wait until the townhomes are completed before we start using that park. And so I think we want to get that done sooner rather than later. As most of the heavy construction in that area is complete. And so the hazard between the walking public and heavy construction equipment should be complete. So hopefully we can get that park completed now rather than, you know, a year from now.
Yep. And Tim, are you our interface within the school district? I'm connecting.
Good question. I think Andy has been as well as Mike and I. So that, to your point, Jonathan, that that connection between our walking trail and the pathway behind the athletic fields at the elementary school is kind of an open topic. We've asked the school a couple of times if they would like us to make that connection, or is there some reason they would prefer not to make that connection? I think the answer is yes, let's make the connection, but I think Andy maybe has later information than I.
No, I think there's a willingness to make the connection. It's just a matter of trying to coordinate the agreement, get that done with the school district's resources.
Yes.
And I've reached out and made contact on that issue, so.
But it makes sense. You know, that gives kind of a termination or endpoint for the, for our trail. That makes a nice connection for kids, you know, going to the ball fields and to school rather than walking on Hawes. I think it's a good, good alternative for sure.
Tim, this might sound obvious, but in coordination with them around the sidewalk availability for the start of school, could they also just be reminded of the school hours in terms of when the crossing guard is there, when that area is most utilized, the crosswalk at the top of Green Hill?
That's a great point. Yeah, I think that should be part of our conversation because there still will be construction traffic coming in and out of that driveway. But if we can limit construction traffic to hours other than when the crossing guard is there, that would be a really good thing to talk about. Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Tim, how are things going at the middle school?
Yeah, Pete, going well. You know, obviously you've seen they're going vertical construction. So most of the in-ground infrastructure is completed. The underground detention basin is in. They've done some parking lot work. There are any number of people overseeing that project. You know, the school has their own construction manager. And so initially, we did talk about the township's concern to make sure the school was paying attention to that safe interaction between students, buses, and construction traffic. And they've got a pretty good program set up from what we understand. They haven't made us too much a part of that conversation, but we know that they have that plan in place.
Do you know whether that incorporates the continued use of the tunnel during construction?
I believe it does. Yes. Correct. That's kind of all I have this evening, guys. I don't have any other questions that may exist, but.
Nice to meet you.
Sure, Jonathan.
The, was there a constant interchange?
Yes. Good question. You know, we've got money escrowed in the account for them out to make their side of the crossing. We understand that the county is ready to put that project out to bid. I don't know that I've seen those bid documents come out yet, but you know, they are anxious and ready to go from what we understand. And that's one of the reasons that they were hesitant to work with us on the mount to make that connection because they just didn't want to do anything to upset the apple cart that has been so carefully balanced.
Just, and again, just along the same, there's no movement at all on that trail, but do you think it is still?
Yeah, well, I guess we had some email correspondence with the county folks just a couple of weeks ago, and they are actively pursuing that, that, that construction. Yes.
And then anything on the Valley Green Bridge?
Nothing. After last meeting, I did follow up with my contact at the county. He said, oh yeah, we're looking into it, but I don't think anything is intimate at that point, you know, it's, but it's on their radar at this point anyway, Jonathan, for sure.
I had a question on the LaSalle parking project, you know, I previously asked because it seems like one of the bigger issues is the ability for people to get in and out of that parking lot. And then it results in lots of families using Cotton Road for pickup and drop off. Has there been any adjustment to the in and out?
No. There is not. What they've done is improve parking capacity. Certainly that driveway entrance and exit still remains, you know, kind of a point of conversation, right? It's, it's a difficult, well, it's a lot of vehicles in a very short period of time at dismissal. And that really does cause some problems on Cheltenham, for sure.
Yeah, I think Brendan's point is the delays on Cheltenham Avenue and the traffic at both the morning and afternoon time makes it a convenient spot for people to go to your neighborhood and the top of this hill here.
And drop off.
Drop off, so they avoid all that. So the next time they come before us with a project, that might be something that you want to bring up. It's been brought up in the past, and it's, it's a bad spot.
And the school has become more and more successful over the years, too. I think there are more and more kids and more and more people driving and for sure.
If you ask one other question, it's just occurred to me the other day. The intersection of College Ave and Bethlehem and Buescher, it's always been an issue. It's not often that that corner where the Starbucks was is vacant or kind of just sitting. Does it pose any opportunity to reorient that intersection in advance of a new tenant coming in there and signing a long-term lease or, you know, working with that land? I have no idea of it.
I mean, somebody's going to have to pay the landlord.
Yeah, yeah, but just with it being vacant right now.
It would be ideal for PennDOT to grab that spot and try and realign that intersection. But that's, that's what the problem is. It's an offset intersection, so you've got multiple phases of traffic.
So it's PennDOT that is the one that we need to make the overture?
I mean, if you want them to pay.
Yeah, and you probably have to tear the building down.
Yeah, I would imagine that you have to, yeah.
To, to basically.
Basically attach the property or somehow realign it so that property is now attached to that Barbara B's jewelry store. Make sure to extend the commercial line there. But just because it's been vacant and it's been seen there. You know, if another major tenant came in there and had 10 years, one year lease.
Right.
But.
Yeah, I think that would need to appear on some kind of PennDOT funding program. You know, the realigning of those intersections is going to be very expensive, right? The acquisition of real estate, you know, the actual physical construction of the roadway, the signalization, you know, the signalization control boxes. That's not just, you know, a weekend kind of effort.
Oh, yeah. But just, it's always been the issue, and I think the recent diet on Bethlehem is highlighted. That's probably the main choke point on that whole road. So it just.
Yeah, worth, worth talking about anyway. Yeah.
Brett Nelson's office.
Yeah.
Maybe if there's another similar realignment project somewhere they've done that we could model or at least understand how it worked.
Yeah, I've been involved in a couple over the years, Susie, and it really starts with the acquisition of the real estate. And so making some kind of fair market offer for the value of the land and, you know, it is a complicated process.
Well, it's worth bringing up. I mean, like you said, it's, no matter what the traffic flow is, that's always going to be the problem.
The issue, yeah. Very good.
You want to buy some real estate?
Yeah, right.
But it, but from an engineering standpoint, it could be kind of dynamic because you could actually, I mean, I don't know how much you, I mean, probably you'd like to be out on the Bethlehem, but you could even make that a cul-de-sac so there's no entry onto Bethlehem.
Yeah.
And just basically trade land. So you're trading, swapping.
Yeah, maybe.
Existing Starbucks property for whatever the road and, you know, so they get same square footage. But so cuts all that cut-through traffic in College Ave makes that even more of an intimate, great little cozy neighborhood and, but.
What, how do they get out?
The. Yeah, get out the.
I'm just saying, like, you're.
Oh, right. You're extending the problem.
People here from College Ave, you know, people from Grove and Weiss are going to receive that traffic.
Right, right.
So just have to be mindful of that.
Right.
Maybe traffic will get less.
Maybe.
Over time.
Oh, great, guys.
Al, you want to come up? Will come up?
Sure. Everybody. Yes.
Al Calmly, we have some property in Flower Town. My only question with this is could something be done with the traffic lights just with, because it seems to me.
It's in process.
That's, that's because I agree with you. That, that is probably the big choke point right in Flower Town. And the fact that it has to go through the cycle for College Avenue, that goes through a cycle for Buescher Avenue. You know, is there some way to sort of combine those to reduce that amount of time that everything takes to cycle through?
Or there should be a priority given Bethlehem so that there's a guaranteed amount of green time.
I would agree because I think trying to cut it off would create all sorts of access problems. Fire would not like that a lot.
Do we know where PennDOT is in terms of going light by light, reevaluating the findings?
Yeah, but I've reached out today about that.
So with that whole.
Yeah, I mean, I think just.
They aren't, they aren't done. They're going light by light and now tweak and see.
Right, because I mean, I, I see a good bit of it being in town as much as I am. And it does seem that that intersection is the one that on the other side of it, things clear out. And, you know, moving toward Mill Road, it clears out, but it's really, that's the first place it stops.
Because of the offset, because you just, it's not like you can just have, this way goes all together.
Okay, that was just my thought.
Thank you.
This has seemed to be sort of open.
Great. Anything else for Tim?
Great, guys.
All right, great. Thank you, Tim. Enjoy your evening.
Yep.
Awesome. Okay. So if you want to give me just a quick show of hands, I know some people, what some people are here for, the solar project, some folks are here for that, right? The open space presentation with EAC, small cell ordinance. I know there was some chatter about that. Okay. What else do we have people here for? Flower Town Country Club, okay? Regarding the renewal, at least, okay. Yep. Yep. Welcome policy. Slash immigration. I'm reading that correctly. Okay. Any other issues people are here for?
Rex Center.
Rex Center, yep. Okay. Why don't we do the small cell ordinance, small wireless, just because you're the only one here for it. I don't think it'll take too long. Yeah. All right, Al, while you're making your way, just to give, as a matter of background, we are poised to vote this Wednesday on an ordinance that sets regulations for what's referred to as small wireless communication facilities. And basically, it's an FCC federal mandate from 2018 that provides for the faster implementation of these kind of communication devices. The state passed an act in 2021 that basically said that these are approved uses really anywhere, but if there's any specific regulations or the opportunity to collect fees per that act, there has to be a local action in place. And that's what we're doing now. It's been, you know, the agenda for a few meetings. It's been advertised. The planning commission signed off on it, and here we are voting on it this month, so.
Yeah, and I'm not here to speak against it. I think, you know, as a member of both the Historical Commission and also as president of the Historical Society, I just want to make sure that in, in embracing this, that input is received from those groups when and if sites are identified. You know, I think part of what the concern has been is that somehow there are sites. Probably the best example is the Schwenkfelder Cemetery, which probably very few people even know where it is. But the concept that somebody could put a cell phone tower next to that. Now, I realize we're talking small towers here, which I know I could go through Ambler, and there's two right in the center of town that I'll bet people don't even know is there. We're not talking about these big hundred-foot towers that look like pine trees. But just to make sure that at least when it deals with any sort of, sort of building a special character that those groups are consulted in the process of the final approval. And I think, I know I sit with Commissioner Wilson. He is our liaison on the Historical Commission. And we have seen some of these. I just want to make sure that that gets into the mix. And I think the Historical Society would like to also be a, a player in that. That's, that's the major thing. I think if we all want cellphone receptions, we're going to have to put some of these up somewhere. So, you know, we're just trying to kind of say, let's not put it in a spot that we're going to hate ourselves for later.
So Mike, can I ask you a question about this?
Sure.
The ordinance lays out the parameters for where they can go, what they can look like, how big they can be, how close they can be to certain things like driveways and that sort of thing. But is there any, to Al's point, where is there any flexibility on where we say, no, you cannot have it there because X, that's not defined in the law?
Right, you're saying historical specifically or?
I mean, I guess.
Any sort of site control. I mean, I'm, I'm familiar with another township not too far around, away, who actually has certain sites where they will only allow them to be, recognizing that state law says they can be in the right-of-way. So you really don't have any control over that. But once you get outside the right-of-way, you know, there's some, there's some control about where they can pop up.
Yeah, I would just say this, this ordinance, this small wireless facilities ordinance only regulates the right-of-way.
Okay.
If there's something that's outside of the right-of-way that's proposed, it would be covered by the existing ordinance, zoning ordinance.
Zoning ordinance.
On wireless facilities. So this specific ordinance is only with respect to right-of-way.
Yeah.
Public property.
You just use to the right-of-way. Rights of way, utility easements.
Way or public property, it says. So we could put, we could put one.
Right, or yeah, yeah. So township-owned property?
Yeah.
Correct. Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, yes. But if a private property owner wanted to build a tower, for instance, they would fall under the existing article that's in the zoning ordinance today on wireless facilities outside of the right-of-way.
Okay.
Yes. So there's.
So that's the, that's the, that's the sort of infrastructure control that goes with it to start with.
Correct. So you have a set of regulations on, in the right-of-way and public property. And then you have your existing ordinance today that governs these types of facilities and others that are on private property.
Yeah, I mean, I think we all want our cell phones to be as good coverage as we could possibly have them. But we also don't want to see some ungodly things start to pop up in front of, you know, a building that we think of as iconic. That's all.
Yeah, I understand. I'm just trying to think of a scenario where it meets the code. It follows the state act, but do we have any say? Well, we just don't want it to block the sightline of this particular building.
Yeah, I think.
Know that legally we.
Somehow there was a concern that if you know where the Schwenkfelder Cemetery is, it's basically back in, bounded by Montgomery Avenue. I guess Parsons Lane goes back there, Paper Mill Road and Stenton Avenue. Behind the senior care centers, there's a little driveway. There's a Schwenkfelder Cemetery that dates back to the 1600s. We'd rather not see places like that with cell towers right next to them, if you understand what I'm saying. Pardon me?
A good example.
Yeah, but I mean, that's just, and what, where we start to get concerned is on the spots where we're bordering that. And, you know, that's, that's where we're looking at it. I mean, most places, they end up at the fire departments because they, you know, use them for other radios. But so that's, that's really what I wanted to do was to just say that, obviously, I think the Historical Commission will be involved. But I wanted to speak for the Historical Society as well to be, you know, a participant when some of these things are raised as far as offering information. Okay.
Great, great. Thank you.
Al, did you have any language or ideas on how to incorporate?
I was afraid you were going to ask me that, and the answer is I don't have any right now.
Sure.
I have to think about that. And I think you've talked to Cindy, Cindy Hamilton.
I did, and I spoke with her solicitor and with Mike, and just, just so people know, it's not that it's out of mind. But there is, I would say urgency, but desire to be sure the ordinance complies with the state regulations requirements.
Right.
And perhaps at a later time, we can be sure to follow up on.
Yeah, I'm, I'm here because Cindy couldn't be here, but I think she's trying to run point on this, so I'll.
But if you could speak to it, for anyone who's interested.
I would say that the, the state act, which is Act 50 of 2021, does allow for the implementation of certain design criteria related to historic structures that are designated by the township.
Right.
I think with this particular ordinance, the idea was to get the regulations in place so that the township could regulate what it, regulate what it can regulate. But I think there's an opportunity for consultation with the Historical Commission and the Historical Societies to develop the appropriate criteria to deal with, you know, whatever list of properties the township has that are considered historic properties or have historic structures on them. So I think there's an opportunity to, in the future, do an amendment to make sure that those concerns are taken care of.
We'll work on that, and I think that's what we're looking for. Thank you.
Thanks, Al. And I would just note that there are none of these existing facilities in the township. The township did receive one application in March of this year that was denied for being deficient in several areas, and that has not been reapplied. So as of right now, we have no applications that, that, that's really the, the biggest thing about having this ordinance in place. The act does allow for local municipalities to charge application fees and maintenance, ongoing maintenance fees where these facilities are located. The act puts a limit on what those are, what we can, but we can't even collect them unless we have a local ordinance in place, so that solves that. A little bit. Great. Thanks, Al. All right, so why don't we do the EAC open space?
Hey, everyone. Ben Shimnik, 112 College Ave, and I'm here representing a subcommittee of the EAC that we formed for open space. There's other members along with me today, Alexandra and Bud, who have been working for over a year on this project. You all have the documents on the letter written proposal from the EAC already, along with some supplemental material. I'm just going to spend a few minutes kind of going over the highlights of it. And then really, I was hoping we could use any time for any questions, answers, things like that. So at a high level, I'm an associate member of the EAC and I'm part of the open space subcommittee, which is originally founded by a prior EAC member, Gail Farmer, a little over a year ago. This work initially began in spring of 2024 and comprised of some of the members you see here, plus Ted Bell from the Shatrie Commission and myself. Our scope initially spanned looking at all the historical and prior work done in this space. There was a grant some years ago where an analysis was done. We were kind of looking at revitalizing that work, refreshing it. What are others in our nearby communities doing? What's the best practice standards? As far as conserving not only just open space, but also green space within our township. There's a lot of articles that suggest that there is truly a return on investment of green space, one which I wholly believe in. It also aligns a lot with Montgomery's county plans as far as trail connectivity, community impact, accessibility, all of that green space enables. So our main recommendations that we're coming to you with that are in the letter for your review and consideration. One is we include a definition of open space that you can feel free to adopt or not. But really, we found that there is no true one definition pretty much anywhere. Some of them are one or two sentences. Some of them are 15 pages long. And this is what the group kind of synthesized from all that data as a meaningful way to look and approach this work. Second is maintaining an open space parcel list in coordination with Montgomery County, who has already agreed to do this. We found old lists, new lists, Montgomery County's lists. None of them seem very up to date, actually. Special thank you to Mike Taylor, who definitely looked over our list to ensure with his great knowledge that our data was accurate as well, which we really appreciate. But we have Margot at Montgomery County level, who's willing to maintain the official list, but partnering with us or the township to update in the future. The third is considering action on high priority and urgent open space parcels, which are listed in the letter given to you. And you can see the full list in the accompaniment as well. Fourth is the adoption of some or all of our toolkit to aid in future decision-making. And some of this is contingent upon the last item I'll get to, but basically, a lot of this comes down to, how do we? And some of this is contingent upon the last item I'll get to, but basically, a, a lot of this comes down to, how do we think about open space? What is it? And I feel like at least historically within the township, every time this topic has come up, people get together, work is done, it's disbanded, we don't talk about it for another decade, and then the work has to kind of be renewed again. So the, the zeitgeist of all of this really is that, can we find a way to preserve this intellectual trust going forward? That can serve at the benefit of the commissioners where when properties come up, sorry to mention, I'm just gonna say Carson Valley, but that's one that I think everyone knows is of interest right now, that we can help advise from an outsider's lens, also pulling in other members of the township and the commissions to kind of weigh in on these issues, which brings me to the, uh, main recommendation, which is really the creation of a township green space commission, and we're intentionally calling it green space because open space can have a variety of definitions, but green space is more encompassing. And really, this is the key in having that intellectual trust continue on, provide real-time guidance to commissioners as these issues come up. Um, look at opportunities, and in a perfect world, I think it should be representative. I'm very aware all of you have incredibly busy lives, you're already incredibly busy as commissioners, this would be another ask. But I think it could be adequately staffed by a number of members from existing commissions. Everything that touches green or open space, historical commission, shade tree, zoning, um, EAC, you know, Parks and Rec, all of them to connect into this. And well, the one thing that we found in doing this work is that we needed more input from some of our peers. And I feel that a lot of times these commissions sometimes work in silos. This may be a commission that can kind of unify them across the board more appropriately. Um, at the same time, you know, Montgomery County, many of you probably know, already has open space grants that you can apply for. This would be a formal body that could help facilitate that level of work. Um, so that's the, the short, high-level request, recommendation. Um, Mike Taylor has my contact information if after this anyone has any follow-up conversations. But I, myself and the members of our work are here now. If you have any comments, questions or concerns, and also please feel free to jump in if I missed anything.
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you for checking that. I know I sent it.
Great. Thank you, Ben. Uh, I know, um, you and others have put a lot of work and really been thoughtful about this, so, um, happy you're here, accumulating, culminating in, uh, in this discussion. So thank you. Any questions for Ben?
Do you, do you know, I, do you know if the county maintains in that list of open space parcels that is provided? Um, a list that, or, or does it dive down to the properties that have like a conservation easement on it already?
Good question. I don't know off the top of my head, but we could find that out.
I can ask Mark as well. I didn't keep up in conversation or not. Cause that would be helpful to understand which of those.
Yep.
Open space parcels are in jeopardy of being developed or are, you know, already like, kind of like buttoned up and uh, you can move on and focus on ones that may not be.
Totally agree. Yep.
How'd you put this list together?
It was using a lot of the existing work that was done, um, in the last opens place plan that was done. Again, working with Montgomery County, Alexandra did a phenomenal job just literally canvassing tons of documents within the township and open space parcels that we just happen to know exist to come up with the master list that Mike has and that we sent to Margot as well. Um, it, there was not one list that seemed to have it all. Everything had a little bit of this, minus a little bit of that. So it was a lot of taking a tons of information and just kind of collating it together and synthesizing what made the most sense. Some of it was outdated. Um, like the Carson track didn't have the right acreage. So like, that was something we were able to update.
And you have listed, uh, for Flower Town Country Club, the owners being Brian Howigan LLC. And that is the, the township's the owner of that property.
Yeah, I think that's more like a, a point of contact is what that.
That column.
Column. So, I would point it out earlier as well.
And just, uh, point of reference, with the Hawes Lane property would not have landed on this list. Prior to its.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I actually think it would be. So I, I would say the list isn't meant to be viewed as every single thing on there is something that we should be fighting for, for open spaces. These are identified parcels that either are currently open space, maybe developable. I mean, i- it's really just a repository. I, I actually think it would have been, um, but open for discussion on that.
So you, so other properties that are currently have another building or are used, but there could be some indications that it's not gonna be there for longer.
Yeah.
So that, that sort of got caught in the net is what would be.
Yeah, yeah. And so I'll, I'll actually use the Flower Town Country Club as a great example, cause it's also an agenda item on the list. If that lease were not to be renewed, is that something, the township does own it, is that something that gets codified by open spaces? Is that something that becomes developable? Is that something that, you know, I, it's really meant to facilitate conversations when these lands come up? That this advisory group, group could help weigh in on what are the potential options, what are the risk factors? Uh, and one of the ancillary documents may not be in the packet. We do have a Google share drive with like fifty documents and all this. It is not all in your packet. But we even have lists on like how to assess these lands as far as rating scales, again, to give the commissioners to make informed decisions. Is there a historical building on it? Does it have a waterway access or not? All, all these other things. So it's not that everything on the list is pure open space. We should be doing something about it. It's more, this has the potential to be something that we look at in time. And please, please, please. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Alex Klinger, uh, seventy-eight eleven Elm Avenue. And, um, the, the list is, um, we, we started with the two thousand and five open space report. And, um, and it's important to note that every high priority property on that report, every single one of them is developed. So none of them were protected. So we wanted to do something, you know, different. Uh, so, but the, those, uh, the, the, there are properties on that list. I mean, there are properties that aren't listed. Um, Harston Woods or the Hawes Lane property, um, should be on there. It's two point seven nine acres. It's township owned. And I, it must have just been a mistake like with the Excel file. So, oh, okay.
Question was, would it have been on there before the township acquired?
It was not in the two thousand and five report, cause it was owned institutional. I mean, it still is owned institutional, even though they're building sixteen townhouses on it. But, um, the, um, and there are, there are, there's another property that's the, um, that we have, that Springfield Open Space has helped, um, build a, a twelve by twelve native plant, pollinator garden to beautify and to help like, maybe reduce trash throwing um, on the corner of Stenton and Ivy. And that's, um, there's a long, but like, uh, it, and that's owned by Pico and it has all those big power lines and they rent like, uh, or they sell Christmas trees there, like you might know it from that, along there. And that is right next to the proposed Cressham Trail expansion. And that is, um, like, could be, I mean, that's open space. It's owned by Pico. I don't think it would be ever publicly accessible open space. But it's something that can be considered open space. So it's, there's, there are a lot of like, kind of nooks and crannies about like, is, is a, um, is a golf course considered open space? Is, are the playing fields open space? Um, in doing an inventory of the, uh, Springfield Township's parks, we have, I think, seventy-seven acres. Although it's now, now Flower Town Country Club isn't listed there, but they, um, I would say it was something like forty-three of those acres are, and I'm, I'm just pulling that number out. I, I, something like that, like very large part of those, um, a- that acreage are playing fields and um, like playgrounds. So that's like, I mean, that's something, I mean, that's going back to where we wanted to have the, um, Hawes Lane property be preserved as an ecological park so that we could have like school things there and stuff, but, and within walking space of three hundred people. And part of that is now that. So that's, um, but that's how we put together the open space. But we, you know, I, we have a map of Springfield Township and, and mark them all out. And, you know, we almost like are afraid to even, like, I don't think, I don't think we included the Biddlewoods part in that open space. Is that on there?
I think it is.
Okay, good. Yeah, yeah, naturally. And so, yeah.
Thanks. And I'm just gonna, Alexandra brought up a really good point that I probably went too quickly over, which is the biggest takeaway when this group's launched over a year ago from the two thousand and five plan was that all of that lane identified had been developed. Um, there was a certain amount that wasn't, and because of the grade and elevation, it just couldn't be. So really, the, not to go repeat with the whole intellectual trust part of this, but really it's, if we don't take action, we will lose it. That's what we're seeing across the board. Other townships who have active open space type commissions, um, are active in this space. So that's really the selling point is, you know, let, let's do something before we don't have anything left to talk about.
Yeah, question. Uh, the two thousand and five list, the ones that were developed, um, were they a mix of private and township owned lands? Or mostly private or?
They're all private.
Yeah.
We didn't develop any township.
Right.
I mean, it's, one of them was the Borst Track. Township actually had an agreement of sale that we had submitted and we had funding to buy it, but a developer outdid us.
Yeah, which can happen. Thank you.
Ben, you mentioned, um, obviously the recommendation for having a standing commission. You talked about having some of the existing committees and commissions represented. Beyond that, have you gone into any more detail like what you would wanna see this structured as, or are you leaving that open?
Um, well, it's open to you commissioners, but I'm happy to share my thoughts and the thoughts are of me as an individual. Um, on our team, everyone had a little bit different thought, what it could be. Um, I, I personally think because it touches so many of our existing commissions, I can see this being something that does have a representative from each one, hopefully voluntarily. But when we started this work, we reached out to all the commissions to get, we were hoping this group would be that representative. And, um, one person from Shade Tree, thankfully Ted Bell, shout out to him, did join us. Um, I, I do see that being a vital aspect. It is asking for people who are already appointed members to have more of their time. And it may be that an existing commissioner is able to donate a little bit of time for that as well. I, I don't believe though, this is the kind of work that may need to meet every single month. Maybe this is something that's a quarterly meeting, like it might not be the full-blown. It might ramp up and become a monthly meeting if there's something large happening where we need to be weighed in on and advised upon or asked for our opinion of things. Um, but otherwise, you know, I, I think it's mostly something to keep the continuity, keep larger projects in mind and to keep the, really the, how's the intellectual trust of it all. Um, that being said, I mean, our team is mostly comprised of also members from the community. So I would love for there to be community involvement as well. That's the passionate people that tend to move the agenda items.
One, one thing that I think would be helpful too is sort of prioritization of this list. It's, one thing, it's nice having a list of fifty properties, but, um.
In, in the letter, there's a, there, there's a few properties that were listed as high priority. Th- those were the ones that we felt needed the most urgent or soonest attention. Spoiler, Carson's number one.
And the letter kind of speaks to that, that would be part of your goal, right? It's that prioritization that John's referencing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You mentioned other municipalities that have similar open space committees. Any examples you give through the comparables?
White Marsh seemed the closest to me. Um, I'd have to go back into my notes, so I don't remember the rest off my head, but we looked at a number of them. They all have different flavors of it, but White Marsh seemed very active. And we did go back from the two thousand and five report and to see who we liaised on with when that report was done. And almost all those groups are now defunct. Um, so I, I think it's really at the township level, these commissions or committees live or die.
Yep. Okay. Well, I think it's, I think it's great. I mean, I think it's really important. You could make the case that townships and municipalities that have a lot of open space or underdeveloped, or not yet developed. It's really important there. And if you don't take a careful pro- you know, proactive approach, things just start to slip away as those towns become more popular and get developed. Next thing you know, it's like, what happened to our space? But I would make the case for someone like us, where we don't have a lot of parcels for sale or just sitting there open land, it's even more important.
Yeah.
Cause every single one of these parcels could become much more, much more dense. We already have traffic density that's never gonna necessarily get better on its own and that kind of thing. So I think it's incredibly important.
Uh, I just say, thank you for all your hard work. I know we've met a couple of times and, um, read through it a few times. Be detailed, but I do wanna, uh, touch on the institutional, uh, use of property that, you know, there was a time when some of commissioners, uh, met and talked about making this list. And I'm so glad to see it come to fruition and grateful for the work of community members. Um, but one challenge, just to keep in mind, uh, speaking to what John said, is there are properties out there that are zoned a certain way, that may have a large amount of green space, but
Yep.
therefore the locus of control is not really with us at this time. However, just a reminder to everyone that we are hoping to embark on a, a, so, so relook at our zoning. And that's going to be a good opportunity to have that discussion again. Um, and appreciate all of your work and, and hoping to carry this forward. And I, I don't wanna speak for everyone. I can speak for myself, but I think we are generally supportive of this and just looking for functional ways to, um, be sure we're being thoughtful about how we approach this.
I fully agree. Thank you for those kind words. And yes, zoning and planning should definitely be part of this. That's, yes.
And the only thing I'll add is, is, um, you know, White Marsh is a great example. I mean, they, they really have been a good sort of stunning example of conservation of the area. But the model is also based on, I think, some very philanthropic.
Yep.
Families that, you know, just, we, we may or may not necessarily have here. Um, and, and also a different tax base. Uh, so one of the, I mean, one of the challenges we've always had is we are predominantly residential tax base. And I think the priority list is important. You know, Carson Valley absolutely should be number one, but same time, might not be feasible uh, for this residential tax base that we have, if we don't wanna just, you know, raise taxes sky high. And so when we take on a project like Claus, you know, it does limit our ability to then tack something to Carson. And one project that was not on the priority list, but I would put on a priority list, is St. Phillips, just because it is vacant right now. Something has to be done with that. Um, and again, I'm not necessarily advocating for it, but, you know, there is a situation where at some point, Diocese is going to have to determine what they wanna do with it. Um, and, you know, we may say that's more of a priority for us and more of a feasible acquisition than tackling something, you know? Uh, and so that's where I think some of that priority piece has to come.
Yeah.
A little bit more nuanced, I think, than just sort of simply saying, all right, Car- Carson Valley is number one.
Well, one, one hundred percent agree with you. And I think, you know, I mean, we didn't get into this work in the subcommittee, but in a commission, I think we would look at, well, how can these things be funded? How, like, what are their options? Like, I'm sure there are other pathways. Some have already been discussed, but again, at the subcommittee, we really focused on just do the homework aspect, but I do think that's a significant consideration as well. And again, um, in the, there's a long grid of like sixteen, and I'm sure there's more in real life, but variables of ways to assess what is a priority property, what is one worth going after, and financial is part of it. Um, I'll, I'll use Carson again, cause it's an easy one, but there's some historical buildings on there that's not as simple as keeping a trail mode, right? There's gonna be maintenance costs. Like, I think all those assessments go into that as well. And, you know, priority may change. And again, it's advisory for you commissioners to ultimately, uh, vote and make a decision on from a property standpoint. But I think this commission, the hope of the open space commission is that we would be able to kind of give some more insight into that process as well. But you're not incorrect. Land costs a lot of money. And, you know, conservation can also be taking lots of different forms as well. Sorry, I'm gonna mention the golf course again, but you know, i- is there a way through either zoning, planning, ordinance? Or is even with this green space commission where we can have the golf course continue to be leased as it is? But can we do better green space practices with shrubbery that's nowhere near the players that we can let grow a little bit? You know, I, I think it can be small and also large scale as well. And I think this commission would really take a look at all those level details and in between.
Great.
Thank you all for your time. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Uh, any other comments before we go into that next? Yeah, we're hoping the, uh, the commission would take, uh, uh, do a better job of, of advertising that and selling it. So.
Yeah.
At some point last year, we did create an open space fund purely donation-based that uh, the township would set aside up to, I think it's two hundred thousand per year.
I think that's.
Yeah, up to two hundred thousand per year, uh, to match every dollar donated. So if somebody wanted to donate a hundred dollars, the township would match their hundred dollars, uh, up to two hundred thousand for any given year. And that money is set aside for, um, the kind of work that we're talking about.
Yep. And we did get two donations last year.
Yep, two donations.
Uh, it's a thousand right now. And at the end of the year, if that's all that we get, the township will match that with another thousand. But if we get suddenly another hundred thousand between now and the end of the year, the township is obligated to match it with another hundred thousand.
Hundred and ninety-eight thousand.
Just that, yeah, the open space or.
Just that, yeah, the open space or green space, uh, mission was how it would take.
Yeah, okay, so we do have that, we've, we've announced it a few times, it's on the, um, it's on the website. And I don't know that a lot of people pay attention to it, but maybe we can do a better job marketing. But that, you know, it's only a small piece, right? I mean, people already put a lot of money in various ways, so that's not going to buy a whole lot of eighty acre properties. Any other comments or questions on that topic? Okay, great. Why don't we do the, um, solar? So. Yep, so, um, we've been working on a potential solar panel project. It would power a couple of the municipal buildings and we put in our RFP for providers to bid on that. Uh, we received a number of bids and, uh, that's where we are now. We're, we're to a point of, uh, of considering taking action on it with, with a big caveat. Uh, which tab are we on on this?
Tab K.
Tab K, okay. So, um, Mike, why don't you just describe where we are at that? Because I know we have bids, but we also have something we need to be verified in regards to the IRA.
Yeah.
And where we stand.
So a big component to the solar project being feasible is the, um, inflation reduction act. There's a, a credit that can come back to us or a rebate, um, equal to thirty percent or potentially forty percent. If we have, um, some of the components that are more domestically assembled, I guess you could say. Because there's always going to be some pieces of them that are sourced internationally. Um, but in any event, we put this RFP out for a design bill. Uh, we wanted to take advantage of the latest technology and some of the talent that's out there in the solar industry to tell us like, what's the most? Cost effective, um, best newest, greatest system that we could have for our facility. Um, rather than hiring at our expense, uh, an engineering firm that would design something that may or may not be the, the most recent. Uh, technology that's out there. So we were pleased that we got six responses back, um, from firms that are all over the place, some locally based, some. Um, not as locally based, some that are pretty far away, California as long as, or. Ikea or whatever that one was. Um, so in, in any event, the, um, the township had an initial assessment done. And we thought it would be somewhere over a million dollars, um, gross cost. Um, and then the payback time round, what was that? Eight or nine years?
Yeah.
I think you had proposed, um. Our low bid that we received was just over six hundred thousand. And if you take the IRA, um, credits at thirty percent, um, the, the, and some PICO incentives that are out there. Uh, we're looking at about a four hundred thousand dollar project, uh, which is a whole lot better than a million bucks. Um, the, the wrinkle, as Jim alluded to, is that the, um, most recent. Legislation that was passed by the federal government, sometimes referred to as the one big beautiful bill act. Um, alters the IRA, um, and it imposes a caveat that they, they have. Foreign entities of concern, so they don't want these components to have, um, too much material from China, Russia, North Korea. Or Iran. Um, so we're waiting on some guidance from, um, Internal Revenue Service as to what those exact amounts are. Uh, and what would be permitted, because again, a big part of the project is we want to make sure we're eligible for the Inflation Reduction Act credits. Uh, good news is if we have stuff that meets, uh, a certain percentage. Uh, we think we might be able to up that amount from thirty percent to as much as forty percent, which would go to the better. Um, however, most of us recognize domestically produced, um, materials sometimes costly. So, um, in any event, um, we're waiting on that guidance before we make a formal recommendation. But we wanted to share the results with the board because overall it's pretty good news. Um, and we think it's coming together. Ron has, is our, Ron's a township resident and he's been acting as, at times a pro bono, um, consultant for us. Um, and spent a lot of time on this. And he sat in on a couple of calls with, uh, the two low bidders, because we wanted to vet the two lowest ones just to see if. They were, we're doing apples to apples here. Um, both seem to be pretty qualified, um, know what they're talking about. They've all done, um, pretty significant projects, so I think we'd be do okay with either one. Um, but again, we're just kind of waiting on the IRS to give us some additional guidance.
What was the, with the original projections before we went out the bid? Uh, what was the payback period? Was it nine years?
Eight to nine years.
Eight to nine years, okay. What is it now based upon, say, a little bit here?
I don't know that we ran the numbers yet, um, but the system is actually a little bit smaller than the one that Ron had projected. And that is part of why it's a little bit, little less costly, but, and that may impact, you know, what our.
That actually wouldn't impact it at all.
Ron, you want to come up? Yeah.
I was gonna say that may not impact it so much, uh, on, even though it's a smaller system, still a payback. It's really about, you know, what is the costing, what's, what's return on that? So, um, but it is about, um, getting close to about half, not quite half of what it was. Yeah. I mean, it's definitely significantly much lower than, than what I came up with. And I'm glad I, I had a high number when I did my assessment. So the reality was like, the numbers came in much, much lower and that was across all of it. I think only one maybe matched my number or maybe most of them all that were much lower than what I.
There were three that were like the high nines and a billion.
Yeah. So are we not considering or is the recommendation not to consider the power purchase option?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that, so I was a three of, three to six, I believe. Came up with a, um, an option, an alternative option to have power purchase agreement. And, um, no surprise to me, but it came down to that, you, the, the. You know, the way it is right now, it would come down to that the township would actually have to pay probably equal to, if not higher amount. Uh, in terms of a rate, like, you know, maybe you're paying, I think, what is it, um, around ten cents a KW H? Well, you may have to pay ten cents a KW H for that power purchase again. Well, what are we doing this for? You know, you're getting solar, but in fact, you're not really getting really a deal for that.
Just for the, for the benefit of, of, of the audience.
Yeah.
Two options where the township actually puts out capital, buys the equipment. And we immediately start seeing savings and then over a period of time, that payback is, is realized versus power sharing agreement where we don't have an upfront cost. Uh, and we, you know, the, there's a, a sharing of the savings.
Right.
Over some period of time, but it sounds like the payback isn't good enough.
Yeah, and, and what's added to that though, it could direct, if it's direct ownership, um, then there's, you have to pay attention to the, um, operating maintenance costs. That go on with that, not, there's a whole lot of it, but throughout its lifetime, you have to pay attention to that. It's on the township's responsibility, whereas a power purchase agreement, it's owned by that third, a third party. And then they take care of all that.
At some certain point.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, and that's all within the green, agreement of the contract.
And speaking of lifetime, what would be, in your experience, a true lifetime of this modern installation where we'd have to theoretically replace?
The weakest link, okay, the two major components to this is really you have the solar panels themselves that generate DC power. And the inverter that converts that DC to AC power. It's inverters that ha, or that sort of that weak link, they typically have a ten year lifetime. Um, and, uh, that, that tends to be, it could be ten to twelve years life, lifetime. And they're the things that have to be replaced in the future. Um, but it's not an enormous expense for replacing those. The panels themselves have like, they say a twenty five year lifetime. I've been doing this for a long, long time. The reality is they do last, they could last thirty five years, but it's more like about, and they don't really fail, they do pretty well. They, they continue to operate, they do slightly degrade a little bit every year, but it's more about, oh, year seventeen. I, the, the panel doesn't work, I gotta replace it. Oh, I can't find that panel anymore, that company is no longer around any longer to even get it. So to, and fit it in the same spot where the original was. So the, these are the weird complexities that come out of it. This way to round it, doesn't mean that the whole system doesn't work anymore. It's just a, you know.
Yeah, but it begins to lose efficiency.
Uh, well, they all, yeah, by definition, there's a little bit, it's a, they, theoretically, it's like a half a percent a year. Is really what that, you know, that, what's using analysis all the time. Uh, and it may not even be that.
And just, just to clarify, would, would you believe that most of these providers here would have been using? Uh, equipment from China or Korea or?
Yeah, it's a good chance that a lot of them, uh, would be, because most of the equipment is coming out of, out of those countries. Um, there's some.
The most affordable.
Yeah, there's some that coming out of the US, they definitely cost more. But what, right now, the lowest bids are based on probably the out of, out of country, uh, products. And we'll have to see how that weighs out at the end, because, um. You know, I, you know, as, as been said, you know, if, if the rules come out, out of the IRS. That, um, some of the equipment that in fact had been proposed doesn't quite comply now to getting that thirty percent. Then we have to reconsider, what are we going to do? We're going to either buy that equipment anyway, forget about the thirty percent, or maybe get the American replacement. And then, you know, so it's, it's a, you know, it's a reevaluation of all that.
But your, your belief is after looking at all these numbers, that the, if we, if we were able to acquire the system. For the lowest, from the lowest bidder here, that our payback would be in around ten years.
Oh, be far less than ten years, far, far less. Oh, yeah, I mean, like I said, I, I was coming with nine, it's probably more like six or less, you know, so it was, and it should, really, I should have done like quick math before. But yeah, I mean, it was, it was substantially lower. Yeah.
Great.
And in ten to twelve years, how much are we talking for inverter replacement?
Um, that's a moving target too. It's, it's not, it's not really a massive expense though. I mean, you know, it's, uh, it, I think we are, we may have had, some of these, um, proposals had three or five inverters. You know, that was spread across the two different buildings, depending on what, what it was about. Um, and a lot of times it's components within the inverter that has to be replaced. So maybe the whole inverter doesn't have to be replaced. Seventeen dollars? No, I have no idea. I can't, I mean, I can't make that call at the moment, but you know, um, well, there, there is a, um. A number that, uh, I come up with, it's, but it's a, it's a scaled number. So it's like about eight dollars per, uh, KW, I think. So it's about, it's, it's a relative number to the size of the system and, and on an annual basis. You know, so it's just, uh, when you do the economics, you would factor that in, you know, just when you look at the cash flow analysis. Like I did that in my analysis, so I factored in the, the, uh, replacement of the inverter. And that's, and you would see what the cash flow, you know, uh, results would be relative to that.
But none of these numbers incorporate that assumption.
Um, well, I should say, a, a lot of the, a lot of the proposals, surprisingly to me, didn't have any economic analysis at all. And I was like, what? So some did, some, you know, and, uh, those that did, I know one in particular had a much higher O and M cost than I, I, I came up with. I was surprised that was so high, but that's, that's what you see. You'll see all these, you know, different assumptions that go into it and, you know, uh, how they're referenced. And you just have to weigh them all out against each other.
And have you worked with any of these providers?
Yeah, I know several of them, yeah. Two of them I know greatly well, and it's a few others I know as well, so, yeah. And some I don't know at all. In fact, I know the one, the California one, they, they literally took my analysis verbatim and just kind of repeated it. It's so. Down to the nth degree, it was pretty funny, like, okay, but so there wasn't much substance behind that one, uh, to give it much credit.
And that's Ikea?
Yeah, yeah.
And I've said this before, and, um, I think just as important as the cost analysis, and it is very important. Uh, but you should highlight, uh, you know, I don't think we as a society have any appreciation for. Uh, what's coming down the pipe in terms of energy costs and energy constraints in this country. And we were twenty five years wind down. And so to be able to control our own energy, at least for the township building and control those costs. Uh, I think that we as a society are going to face some really.
Yeah.
Stark realities when it comes to, uh, the cost of energy in the future.
Yep.
So I, I really, I would put that.
Yeah, that's, yeah, and to your point, I mean, you know, the capacity auction that just came out, you know, again, it even raises prices again. So everyone's going to feel the impacts of out of the, getting, you know, kind of the big picture. These, these prices are going to be going up, electricity prices are going to just go up and up and up. So this, this is a way that you just flatten that, that cost out for like that twenty five year period. For at least what, from what it produces and it's a, you know, it's a worthwhile investment.
And, and Ron, none of these incorporate any storage facility?
No, they do not. No, they do not.
So we'd still be hooked up to the grid?
Yeah, and you would still be hooked up to the grid even if you had storage. You, I mean, you don't have, you could be off grid, but it's kind of foolish. You'd take advantage of the grid even when you have storage and you could use storage to help, you know, even reduce your goss even more. But you always kind of, it's a good idea to always be tied to the grid with your storage and you, and you work with it. There's an outage, the storage comes in and, and delivers that backup power. Or you could use it for time of use rates and kind of even reduce your, your, you know, your electric bill even further. But for the time being, I think probably, no, it's, it's not to say that you can't incorporate storage maybe down the road. You know, even with one of these systems, so something to think about.
You get a comment behind you?
I mean, I just wanted to put some, put a finer point on like the cost of future driving, really good.
Had your name.
Oh, sorry, Aaron Stumpf was, um, just in my own capacity, uh, not as part of the AC. But I just wanted to note that, uh, I work in wholesale energy markets and PJM just had their last capacity auction. And it went, I think the, it was like three hundred and twenty nine dollars per megawatt hour was the, what it came out to be, which is an enormous number. If you follow wholesale energy, uh, like auctions. Very high, it's a thousand percent higher than it was two years ago. And a thousand percent higher, so like when we think about, and, and this is sort of like the tip of the iceberg with regard to like. Potential power costs with lots of data centers sucking up a lot of power. It's a big issue. Um, Governor Shapiro had actually sued at the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission to cap costs. Because it was getting, they saw this coming.
Yeah.
And that, that cap was met that, that they sort of agreed in a settlement for. So I think it's, it's a hedge too for future energy. Yeah.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments for Ron or just in general?
So we're going to basically wait on this and see what happens, uh.
Wait till next month.
See what happens.
Let me see.
We're going to get some clarity, I think, in the thirty days.
They have forty five days to send out their regs, um, and it was from the date of the enactment of the bill.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the regs are going to come out.
Couple, I think they're coming along their deadline in a couple of days.
So at this point, our, if we choose to go forward, we can act on, and make it award in September.
But I, I do think regardless of how attractive that IRA legislation does make the cost. At some point, you know, when you, when you think about the, the rate of the increase of, of cost of energy at some point.
Right.
Regardless of the benefit of the IRA.
Right, and we went into this again, thinking it was going to be a nine year payback. Uh, and if we're, you know, we're lower than that, we have to go back up a little bit, still could be worthwhile project.
The other, um, thing there, you know, the, 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 uh, you know, beautiful bill thing is basically also has conditions. For how, how soon you have to implement and have a system in operation. Um, but we have a little window here, we have some time that, that has to all happen. Uh, you know, basically it has to start, I think, before the end of the year, I believe. But it's more about, um, finishing up at the other end before, you know, uh, I'll cut that into, by, actually by twenty twenty seven. But there's other conditions, we can, we will clearly be able to meet all those conditions with the timelines that are required for doing this. But, and to take advantage of this short window right now to make sure we get, um, you know, knowing about whether that thirty percent could apply or not, that's the important thing.
And Ron, would the, uh, the, is it S-rays? Is the S-ray?
S-rays, that's something new, no, S-Rex, the solar renewable energy credits.
Okay, yes, uh, uh, is that what they're talking about going away?
No, no, that's going to still be there, that's within the state for, that's a state law that we have.
Right.
That is, uh, slowly dropping. It's probably, um, it's around twenty, uh, twenty five, twenty six cents a, an S-Rex. Now, that may mean too much to anybody, but it used to be much higher. It's all about supply and demand, uh, within the state, you know, what, what the requirement is in the state, how much solar. We have three times more solar than we had even like four years ago. It's, or, you know, it's, yeah, it's, it's amazing how much solar. So the supply is actually really increasing, so like that price.
Those, those potential savings would be in.
Yeah, yeah, that, yeah, and that would be another issue, whether that's included or not, we've talked a little bit about that. It's not a really high, um, factor that is considered in the economics, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Good, all right, let's, uh, let's go to the immigration question. Um, we were going to talk about that later, even though it wasn't a necessarily a formal, uh, agenda item. But we, a number of us have been fielding some questions as it relates to local government and federal immigration enforcement. People have been asking, sure, what, what our policies are as a township, uh, and particularly in, in the police department. So, um, open that up to, to public comment, anyone has any questions? Particularly in in the police department. So um, open that up to to public comment. Anyone has any questions?
Hello, um. My name is Terry Cohen Johnson, uh, two nineteen Roche Avenue, Orland. This past Saturday, I attended a rally in Germantown. And it was entitled Free Anu. I don't know if you've heard about it, but Anu is a man who lives in Germantown. He was a refugee from Laos when he was three years old. He lived in the Germantown community all those years, married, children. Became an owner of a restaurant. Das Gud is the name of the restaurant. A great member of the community, employer, taxpayer. And a few weeks ago, he was detained by ICE. Is now at the Mochanon Detention Center in Phillipsburg. Where the conditions are supposed to be deplorable. In fact, a person who was detained there committed suicide last week because of the horrendous conditions. And that's where Anu now is. So the rally on Saturday consisted of community members who have worked with him, been his neighbors. His wife, who broke down in tears, which caused many of us to cry. And yes, this happened in Germantown, but it could easily happen here in Springfield Township. And our hope is that our township does everything in its power to protect our good neighbors. These are law abiding, tax paying, hardworking, good citizens. I attended a Montgomery County Commissioners Meeting a few weeks ago, and they've done a lot. To implement policies to protect our county's immigrants, but they say a lot is still up to the townships as well. So we're just hoping our township in conjunction with the Springfield Police do everything they can to protect our good neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jane Thomas says, you know, um, there have been some, uh. Townships or areas where ICE has actually gone to the police department and said. Who are your bad guys that you want out? And we'll go after them and we'll leave your good guys alone. And I hope if our police have any contact with ICE, that they can kind of make that same. Um, arrangement. Because that's why it was supposed to be the criminals were supposed to go. There are a lot of good people here. And maybe they didn't come in legally, maybe at three years old, what the heck did he know? And there are a lot of other um, people that have. Not gotten their citizenship because they thought they already had it through adoption and things, and it it's just. Not good for them. So I hope the same.
Thank you. Gee, I'm sorry, um. Are you able to say what what municipalities that happened to? I I'm I'm processing what you said, but I'm thinking that. Um, if there's a. Okay, well, if there's people in our community that have committed crimes that are walking around and uh, there's probable cause, they should be charged and and arrested. Not. My point is, um, federal immigration officers aren't. Are not empowered to enforce local laws. That's what our local police. Any other questions or comments?
Do we do we know whether we've had any any instances of uh, ICE. Raids in Springfield?
Uh, Thad Kirk, uh, Surrey Road in Orland, um, just a question. Uh, it's my understanding that there's already some sort of policy or or at least understanding um, within the police department as to how. Um, as to how this type of thing would work. Could could somebody speak to that?
Uh, sure. In fact, we're, we may want to wordsmith that, um, and our intention. Is to share that on Wednesday at our business meeting, that put out a formal statement, will also. Uh, make it available and writing on the township website and that kind of thing. So, uh, we just want to make sure that we're. We're stating that right and it clears up any confusion. Um, but um. Uh, Commissioner Ratzavon actually, you know, knowing that this was coming down the pipe several months ago. Um, wanted to be clear what our policy was, and it pretty much mirrors what um, some other municipalities are trying to have, but. Um, I'm not going to get into every last detail, but I'll tell you that the most important parts that you're probably asking is what. What our local police do not do. And just. Um, just sort of quick, we, the local police does not enforce federal immigration laws. Um, our local police does not inquire about an individual's immigration status during routine policing activities. Our police does not conduct immigration raids or detain individuals solely based on their immigration status. Uh, nor does it provide personal information to US Immigration and Customs Enforcement unless required by a judicial warrant. Or a subpoena. Um, we do not, our department does not detain detain anyone solely based on their immigration status. Uh, nor is that communicated um, to federal authorities. And I think at the county level, excuse me if I misspeak on this, but um, the county had. Some level of detained, detaining someone who was undocumented for a certain period of time. Uh, but I think they changed that policy pretty recently to not detain them at all based on immigration status. Provided they would be otherwise released for whatever they were being detained for. Am I saying that right?
Yeah, they don't house um, a Montgomery County Correctional Facility for immigration status.
Yeah, right.
There could be an undocumented alien that was charged with a crime locally, and they may be detained there. But not based on immigration status.
Right. Would a federal agency notify the local municipality if they were going to conduct an operation?
Automatically.
So as far as we know, our police department has never uh, had a request to give any sort of. Immigration status information or participate in any sort of immigration enforcement. Um, and I think that's typical, we're not in typical times, so uh, what might be coming from. Administration may be different and I expect would be different on pressuring, you know, local, local municipalities. Now, there are some jurisdictions that are actively going into cooperation agreements with. With with ICE and other federal agencies and, you know, we'll talk about that further. I'm certainly not in support of that. I think most. Communities in Montgomery County, including the actual county itself, are not supportive of that. Yeah, part of the record.
Can't see her.
Craig, how many people do we have uh, streaming?
Hi, Jenny Goldberg, um, seven oh seven East Mermaid Lane, Winmore. I just wondered how you'll promulgate that policy because so much has to do with. How the people in their township feel, the people who want to support those people, that they know. What the what the deal is, and the people who are immigrants themselves, that they don't have to feel closeted in their homes.
Yep. Yeah, totally understand. Well, one, like I said, we we will make a statement. Um, it'll say more than what I just said, but but hopefully it will clarify some things. Uh, we will make that available. We'll put out an announcement. Um, to the distribution list for the township, put it on the website and that sort of thing. Um, but you should know. Although our police department in our township is not required to cooperate with federal enforcement, we also don't have the power to stop it. I mean. If there is a signed judicial warrant or subpoena, then yes, we are required to. Yes, yes. Right, but if if ICE decides to have a raid to enforce federal immigration law. We don't have the authority to say, no, you can't do that. Certainly the things that people in the public can do, just advocating for people, uh, making sure people know their rights. Documenting things, making sure things are 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 transparent, um, giving a welcoming message like. Citizens can all do that. We can, you know, give a welcoming message as a township as well, but I just want to set expectations. Uh, the township does not have authority to stop federal immigration. You know, courts do and and that sort of thing, but. Well, we would have to follow any sort of judicial warrant or subpoena.
Right.
Right, so if it's not that, there's no requirement to do anything. So it's like an administrative word. I'm not, I'm not an expert on this.
I think what you're thinking of is a request to 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 detain without a warrant.
That's correct.
Yeah, we need a warrant to detain. Yes.
Yeah, Patrick Eddis, Avondale Road. Um, so is is Pitco still the the chief of police here?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm honestly not that interested in hearing any town township statement. I mean, it's pretty much meaningless. I would like to hear from the chief of police as to what his policy is and um, how he's directing his officers. Because honestly, that's the only thing that matters. If you guys, you know, you know, jump on some bandwagon or whatever. It really is completely meaningless. So honestly, you just, we would need to hear from him.
Just to clarify, the statement that we're that I read from and that we're going to make available Wednesday is in full support and agreements with our police.
Yeah, I think that statement is a reflection of police policy. I don't think we would mistake the policies that are being. You, or that are in effect right now. Are you saying there's a different policy in effect? Does make. I don't think there would be a different policy. I just want to share that I think I really appreciate those who um, came forward today. My family's allow, I I will say that. Visually reference that we are in unusual times and, you know, there are members of my own family who don't even want to go to Canada, who are citizens. Right? And these are just the experiences that are really happening, not to say that this will uh, not be helpful. Of course, it will be. I'm not sure that there's anything that we could say or do to remove that uh, pain and the uh. Experience that people are having, except to continue uh, to offer welcoming messages, offer legal support. Um, offer opportunities to uh, be present should anything ever happen, wherever they may be and whoever they are. However, you're connected to these individuals. Um, I'm not sure that there's. Any policy right now beyond sharing that, which I think we are already doing with our limitation that will take away or sell uh. Be a salve to that challenge right now. So I just want to be honest and upfront that. I think we're going to do what we can. Uh, I think we already are doing what we can, um, but protecting our neighbors will. Will require all of us as you are doing right now, and even even being present today and coming today, uh, you know, it's much, much appreciated. Oh, absolutely. That I think that's my point is, uh, the comment was realistic. There's something we said about standing up. I think that's my point is we are standing up. We should stand up. Uh, I don't think there's any, uh, at least as far as I can tell, anyone here who wouldn't, um, and I would choose to, I do choose to. Visually is as well. I appreciate that. Wish I Macnamara also brought this up early on, so uh, I think there's there's value. I think there's also value in being sure that we're uh, working with the county, being reflective of those policies who are also, as you commented. Uh, trying their best to be sure the policies comport with this, with this feeling.
Yeah, I just want to acknowledge that we know, uh, or speak for myself, I know, you know, what's happening. The story that Terry told. Unfortunately, is not a unique story, right? If if ICE and uh, the current immigration efforts were going after. Truly the bad guys, the violent criminals, I mean, you'd you'd have all sorts of support and happiness for that, right? You're not, you're not here to advocate for uh, violent criminals continuing their uh, their status. You're you're here, I'm guessing. For the due process of people, uh, for for people that are trying to follow the rules, but still undocumented. People that are a part of our community and communities. So I'm with you, absolutely. So we'll we'll do what we can with the township from a legal standpoint. As a citizen, I'm right with you. Any other comments, questions? Right. Um, so we do have some, I, I, there's probably some minor tweaks that we could talk about and have it ready for for Wednesday. And like I said, we'll we'll make a statement and just make that clear. Um, have it answer any questions then too, and it will make it, you know, publicly available as well.
And I think to be clear, it's a big statement that's informational for everyone to understand what to expect from the police. It's not just, hey, we disagree. With what's going on nationally array we're talking about. Just to be clear, if anyone asks, it is based on what the process is right now. So everyone sets expectations. That's the purpose of the scene.
Great, thank you. All right, somebody mentioned Flower Town Country Club. So we want to do that. All right, so that's the last tab, right? Tab N.
Hello, um, Alexandra Klinger, uh, seventy eight eleven Elm Avenue. And um, I'm here to speak about the Flower Town Country Club lease renewal. And to urge you to include environmental safeguards that will protect our community's health and the environment. Um, there is um, recent two twenty twenty five research in the Journal of American Medical Association. Um, that people living within one mile of golf golf courses have a hundred and twenty six percent increased odds. Of developing Parkinson's disease. That's more than two times odds. When you live within a golf course, there are some commonly used pesticides and herbicides that are known to cause Parkinson's. Um, then, and we have um, residents that rely on groundwater that can be contaminated by these golf course pesticides. And they could also be um, contaminated by um. Airborne pesticide drift. Um, Pennsylvania has a regulatory gap in these um, compounds. Uh, unlike other states, PA requires no public reporting of golf course pesticide use. There's no community notification about what chemicals are applied on public land, and we have zero transparency. About current practices at the Flower Town Country Club. Um, this is township owned property. And we don't know what pesticides or herbicides are used, application schedules, storage practices or safety measures. Um, we have, um, there's nothing in the lease about that. Um, we've, we've come to the um, township. About other. Um. Other issues with the Flower Town Country Club and and it's just like, well, it's in their hands because they are taking care of it. Um, there are uh. Uh, green solutions, green golf course solutions. Other courses have reduced pesticides used by fifty to ninety five percent. While ma- maintaining quality, there's proven methods, integrated pest management. Organic alternatives, there's a, even in Martha Vineyard, there's a hundred percent organic golf course. Um, and I ask that before um, any lease renewal. That we make, um, while the current lease is, well, part of the current lease is public. Um, but you add add environmental requirements. Um, on in the lease, um, there are uh, boilerplate. Um, examples of that being included, like pesticides not to be, not to be used. Or um, like warning to people that live around when pesticides or herbicides are are set. Um, and so to establish some oversight, um. And include enforcement, um, or and also, um, I mean, this is something else that we've talked about. With um, the current, I mean, the previous township assistant manager. Is to, um, I mean, here I have to set biodiversity goals, um, and this was brought up with a um. Green Space Committee Advocate, um, is it just to have native plantings and non play areas to support wild, local wildlife? And um, Brendan Ford had talked about that with um, Richard Metz about like that we could. We could make this, you know, like what Richard Metz, I don't know if you all remember. we could make this, you know, like what Richard Metz, I don't know if you all remember him, but he um was a great advocate for green space and had brought up like, hey, let's make Flower Town Country Club like Twining Valley. And um that's, you know, maybe not doable, but we could have improvements and have um habitat, ecological habitat restoration in areas around the golf course, especially if we could then reduce the use of these um toxic, dangerous pesticides and um herbicides. The uh that our community shouldn't bear health risks from chemicals on property that is township property. Um, it's public land, the residents should have a say. The health risks are real. I can send anybody a copy of the paper. Um, and uh the um and solutions exist. Um, transparency matters and timing is critical because once we sign the lease or the township signs the lease, that's it. Um, we're not anti golf. I am anti golf, actually, but but uh it's about transparency and um doing the best next right thing. So um, thanks for allowing me to comment.
Great. Thank you.
I I have another thought uh as
You let go?
Uh, sorry. Choy Berkey, one hundred College Avenue. Um, and uh my thought about renewing the the lease, taking this opportunity, it's both another environmental consideration, but also an economic consideration. So just um a- as we stand at the precipice perhaps of getting solar panels on these buildings, remember how we started this process in twenty nineteen? It was by making sure that these buildings were as energy efficient as possible. We started with energy audits, we implemented the recommendations, and that brought down our energy consumption significantly, which has led to making the solar panels much more feasible um and has uh cut our carbon footprint significantly. Now, we started here with these brand new, super efficient buildings, came online twenty seventeen, and look at all that we saved. The country club building surely could stand some looking at. So uh I would suggest that energy audits on that country club building would be a wonderful thing. Now, I don't understand how the finances work. I know that the country club manages it, I think, for a fixed number. So I don't have a proposal, I'm not as prepared as Alexandra was um about who should pay or who should do it or reap the benefits. But I just wanted to toss that into the mix.
Thank you. I mean, certainly any tenant who can save on their, we're paying the energy bill to benefit them.
Yeah, hi. Um, respectfully, I am not paying for Brian Halligan's solar panels. That's ridiculous. Uh, the man won't even fix the pool. And um as far as renewing the lease at the Flower Town Country Club, it's outrageous. Outrageous that you would do it. I know, I know they put a, a large, a yard sign for you on their lawn, but um it's outrageous that you would even consider it. Repeatedly since twenty nineteen, the Halligans have come into this room and threatened and extorted, you know, you, that if you didn't give them the zoning that they wanted and you didn't give them permission to build, that they would, you know, bring some horrible development to us. Eventually, you caved, you gave them a million dollars uh for nothing that they were not entitled to. And then I know it's pro forma, I know you're gonna, you know, rubber stamp the lease, but it's outrageous. And and it's just an absolute sign of weakness and complicity. And I know you're a big fan. I know you have, you know, they put your, their stupid, your stupid yard sign on there. You know, you ran against it like back in twenty nineteen and, you know, I guess you ran against it before you were four. It's outrageous. This is like theft. Um, uh, you know, and so, yeah, I'm sorry, Joy. I know you're a big, you know, solar panel advocate and I appreciate that. It'd be great if we had them, but I'm, I am not paying for Brian Halligan's solar panels. And I strongly disagree with the township renewing their lease. Renew it for a year and then let's find someone else that will actually uh give us a little bit of return on investment. It's crazy.
Thank you.
Hi, Claire Janowitz, eight oh six Hunter's Lane, Orland, PA. I am anti golf.
Pickleball? Do you like pickleball?
Yeah, grant to do energy audits on the building in general or or there was a energy efficiency small the more grant. Is there any way we could, for the sake of getting the information, apply any of that if there's any remaining toward this township?
Joy was our contact on that and helped us orchestrate that grant.
Um, yeah, I'll, we got a grant.
We're gonna go into detail.
I I'm, I'm sorry, but really, this is not, I, I, there is no discussion about these toxic chemicals that are giving us all risk about Parkin, for Parkinson's disease. No comment about about biodiversity and planting and and helping our watershed. And we, I mean, come on. We can talk about the um like this, like if you want to bring up, there's, there's a lot to be said for this lease. And we, I really, really um am insulted that 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 the commissioners would jump on a bandwagon for solar panels. I mean.
That stopped me right there. Nobody suggested solar. I don't, I mean, I heard you say.
Okay, an energy audit for that. I mean, there, there, yeah, yeah.
We heard you. And nobody said anything in disagreement to what you said. So to you, for you to come up here and say that we're jumping on some bandwagon, it's kind of, you know, it's kind of rude.
Well, um, I mean, I, I guess it's like, I can't, I, I always get yelled at at every um township meeting, but um I, I, um, the energy audit for the, there is in the, in your packet, in the hundred and seventy page packet, there is uh was an audit of the building there with with safety concerns of like on a sidewalk. Did you read that? Like, and there's um, and so the um the uh, the, there, there were also um suggested some improvements that were going to be made to that building. And um I think that we could that they, so the um energy audit is like, does that require discussion?
I think there's a broad range of, you know, items to consider in the lease. I just wanted to, while I was
Right, I mean.
Discussion here.
Right, because there are grants too available for this.
Takes away from considering or giving consideration to um what you said, nor do I. I, I did not have a disagreeable response to that. It's just something we're digesting. We also have a public comment that's also speaks to the same topic, right?
Mm hmm.
Like.
Okay, why do this? Can you send us a list of the concerns you have in terms of the the chemicals or whatever you are concerned about that you would like addressed?
Right, but that, um, I, I, I would, I'm absolutely happy to do that. And I can give you an, an example for the lease. I mean, and um and that are grants that are available. Like, I mean, if you're looking for grants for an energy audit, I mean, that
Well, just keep it to, you, you brought up as a concern about the environmental hazards.
Right, right.
Issues of chemicals.
Right, and I also want, and
Yeah, you can send us what you're specifically concerned about. We can read about it and
Right, the, the problem is, is that um that you're voting on it in two days.
Joy was sort of cut off, so I will let her go next. That's fine.
So you did, I, the problem is, is that you're voting on it in two days. So there isn't a whole lot of time.
Just please do that. I mean, we have been discussing this extension for several months, including in public meetings, so. We are voting in two days, but it's not a new issue for us.
Well, I, it, I, I, I don't remember it being on the um any agenda.
It was.
Which agenda was it on? Last month?
Talked about it for several months and
Starting back in March.
Brian and and other members of the club actually came here and presented, talked about those, some of those.
Right, right.
But please do that, follow up with that, and we will consider.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry, Joy.
Very quickly, I will uh continue to be in touch with DEP about looking into more grant money to help us with the country club building. And I do this work because of climate change, because that's also a problem.
Thank you.
All right, the very first time that, I believe it was pretty much the first time that Commissioner May spoke uh in public at a meeting was to interrupt Dr. Klinger. And um it was, it was noted and not appreciated. And now, again, tonight, we had Ed Morris Esquire interrupt Dr. Klinger. I'm tired of it and it's a bad look. Your name is Ed Morris. My name is Patrick Edis. Her name is Dr. Alexandra Klinger. You know, your job is to listen to the residents. When you do stupid stuff, they tell you that it's stupid. That's how it goes. If you don't like that, then you're free to resign or not run. Um, but that's how this operation goes. Um, so her name is Dr. Alexandra Klinger, and you can put some respect on her name, just as I'm, I'm respecting you. Thank you.
I don't want to lose sight of the initial request. I wanted to note, I hadn't really thought about the environmental impact of or what we could ask for in the lease in that regard. So appreciate those who spoke up at this, both on the public comment and for for this meeting on that matter. It seems like something we could probably ask for some version of events. I don't know what.
I mean, it's not lost on us. I mean, I think it's common knowledge that golf courses aren't
Right.
Aren't good uses of open space from an environmental standpoint, right? They're, in many ways, they're disasters. Now, I'm not up on the latest technologies and trends and how that is. I know they're using Roomba style lawn mowers now, just as a as a side note, but we'll consider the information for sure.
And and for the record, the Dr. Klinger walks by my house every day and speaks. I know who she is. All right, and let me, now, now let me finish. If someone comes up to the microphone and misstates what somebody on this board says, I will correct it.
I have a question about um, one of the things that was talked about in Brian's um presentation was potentially adding fans on the golf course, and I don't think that that was um related at all to the use of pesticides, but um Alex, I did read the article as well, and I, I'm not remembering exactly some of the recommendations, but I think there was something um in there around um use of fans for um some elimination of the uh impact, negative impact of the pesticides. So I'm just curious. It's, it didn't really occur to me until I reread that um list of potential improvements, but I wonder if there might be some ways to look at the uh potential improvements that they were, that were suggested and see if any of them might kind of coincide with some of the recommendations that were read up in that article. I know that's not the only article, we're not basing on that, but just something to rustle up and I am not an expert on pesticides. I remember that recommendation, but I have to go back and reread it.
Um, all right, so Mike, do you want to add to sort of where we stand with that and what, what's in front of us? Any other details that that we need to state?
No, you've got, it's all pretty much contained in the, the amendment. We, we are working towards a um daily pool pass um that would get implemented and you'd have the passes that would be available at the library. We have, we've come up with the blackout dates that, you know, we talked about before, that's major holidays and uh some of the weekends in June where it's more popular. Um, but that, that, that in the final list of the capital improvements, some of them have already been completed already.
Think you had mentioned that you'd have that for us tonight. Do we not have that?
Yeah, I don't have that right.
Okay. Yes.
Hi, I'm Terry Hepner. I live on Hawes Lane, um, very close to Preston, um, right by the Flower Town Country Club. Um, and I've been working with Dr. Klinger for a long time now. Um, some of the information, I read the article as well. Um, so I'm within that range of the country club and it's new information for me tonight. It's pretty astonishing that Pennsylvania doesn't require um golf clubs to release exactly what they use and the amounts that they're using. So I think that would be, I mean, first of all, I, you know, back what she is asking you as well to limit it, to um give consideration to the environmental uh impact of those chemicals, but at least request transparency. Um, I think the township should know what's going on in the township. It's township owned land. What are they using? How often do they use it? I would prefer that they not use anything, but I would certainly welcome, I spend a lot of time out in my backyard. I would want to know, when are they spraying? What are they spraying? Should I go inside? Should I, should our neighbors make sure that there are not children and pets in the yard? So I think it would be really important to at least um know what's going on, know what they're using.
Thank you. When do we expect to have the the improvements details?
Uh, hope to have tomorrow.
All right.
Those seem like reasonable questions to ask, right? We, um, in terms of asking for what products are used, how, and there goes, what's the spray schedule or there, things like that.
Definitely.
I really appreciate that suggestion.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, great. Uh, last one, someone mentioned was the rec center. Who was that?
That was great. I have specific comments in front of the year.
Gotcha. All right, well, why don't we do that now? The name is then H, H. Um, so just a little bit of background there, our architect came and presented on during our May meeting. Um, we, you know, everyone is probably aware, we've had a process in the last, gosh, it's over a year at this point, for exploring options for that property. Uh, and what we're going to do as far as having a rec center or not uh for the township. So that May presentation of architect and accumulation of a lot of work that went into, to a preliminary design um that we were considering and uh the price tag was, had a little bit of sticker shock on it. Uh, obviously not surprising that generally costs have gone higher and construction costs in particular have gone much higher, but the overall price tag was, was probably a little too much that, that this board was comfortable with. So we do have five million of grant money earmarked that goes towards that project. So it's a dollar for dollar local match. So if it was ten million, we would pay ten million and the grant would pay ten million. If it was twelve million, the grant would be five and we'd be seven. If it was eight million, we can only use four million of the grant and we have to pay four. So um the preliminary cost for what we had designed uh was approaching twenty million. So um we went back to the drawing board just to consider some ways to cut that down, uh eliminate some of the amenities that we wanted as part of that facility. Uh, consider doing a pre-engineered structure versus all just conventional ground up. A number of us visited the Doylestown project, which is a similar project. Uh, they're almost at completion, so we can kind of, kind of see the layout, what it looked like, what the spacing was like. We did that in Ja, in July. Uh, so now we are at the point where we're considering, do we want to move forward with a scaled back design that's significantly less money? Few less amenities, but still, um, you know, full size gymnasium with six courts that can be used for pickleball, all sorts of activities throughout the day, some uh multi-use rooms for classes and uh and opportunities for residents to use and that kind of thing. So that's, that's, that's kind of where we are uh now to consider next steps. Want to?
It's location for those.
Where's the location? So it's where our existing recreation center is on Willow Grove Avenue. The old seven dollars church, which the township acquired when they were building this campus. And it was an, it was an old church, temporary library for during the project that we converted into basically a, a, a community rec center, but it's two separate buildings. One of them is a gym, very small, very outdated. Not regulation size. The other is the old church where it's just an indoor space. And we did look closely at, you know, what can we do with these existing buildings without building new? And the level of repairs and upgrades it needs just to be under code is really, you know, Band-Aid upon Band-Aid. It's got old boiler systems that are totally outdated, needs new roofs. At the end of the day, if we made it all perfect, new windows, new everything, it's still two spaces that don't really do much on their own. So we made the decision to consider knocking those down, build a new facility that's got a full-scale gym, and some of the things that I mentioned. So, the third option is, we don't have a rec center. We get out of the rec center business, we don't, we have no community center. I guess somebody can make the case that you could do that, that would certainly be the cheapest option, convert it to a park, or sell the property, but those are sort of the three avenues. So I think we all agree that, I don't want to say we all agree, I think the overall sentiment is this could be a really good asset for the community. People need a place to go, we know that sports teams need gym space, we know older residents would appreciate somewhere to go, play pickleball, if that's your thing, and that kind of stuff, so. See, that's why I was asking if you like pickleball earlier. There's no golf in there whatsoever, no golfing.
There'll also be other rooms, right? We know that the library rooms are pretty much used to capacity.
Yep.
Most times I've been in there, they certainly are. Sometimes it's hard to get a room in the library, but you need ones, this would be additional space for community members to meet, to have classes offered, things like that.
Yeah, and residents could reserve the space for events and that kind of thing, at a, you know, at a modest, you know, township type of rate and that kind of thing. So all that programming and stuff is yet to be determined, but we're still in the conceptual phase. You know, how much are we willing to spend, and what do we want?
Okay, anywhere pool?
No pool. No pool. When we had community people come out, when we had open houses with the designers getting feedback, and you're like, you know, we had all sorts of wish lists, and, you know, pool's certainly there, but that's a pretty big one. Anybody have any questions or comments on that? What else do we need to add to that? Do I, anything else?
Yeah, if you want us to make contact with either Boyle Construction and KSD, and try and get some better numbers as to what, you know, we'd be looking at in terms of professional fees and design for something that's greatly scaled back and very comparable to what Doylestown put up, just to get some numbers, I mean, you're not committing to anything yet. I know the Mount, Tim talked about it earlier, they're putting up a fieldhouse, it's going to be very, very similar. It's a pole bar, you know, it's a pre-engineered building. But it's, I'm sure it's going to be very nice, I thought the Doylestown Center looked really good, the thing put up.
Yeah, that was a, most of it was comprised of two pre-engineered buildings, and they had some conventional constructions, or combining the two. But it's not like you would look at it and go, ooh, look at that, you know, prefab building, it looked nice. And the space inside seemed roomy, and it was smaller than what our design was.
And Jim, I had the, had a chance this afternoon to go to the Price Home facility that Emily
Emily had mentioned?
Yeah, had mentioned, and it is a very, very impressive building.
Okay.
I took some pictures, which I'll share with the
That was how big, how many square feet was that?
It's about 18,000 square feet, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's what our scaled-down size would be, something like that.
Now, what they, they have, they have a, the constraint, I think we would, we would have to be careful with is, again, the size of the building in relationship to the parking. Because they, even though they have a 70, 18,000 square foot building, they have 140 parking spaces that are around it, you know, and it's a very good-looking building.
So we had, I think, 80 something.
Eighty-five.
But that would go up a little bit, because we have a smaller footprint, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's a very, and it's exactly what you described, it's basically two pole buildings, one big pole building where they have the gymnasiums and stuff, and a smaller one where they have the support, support rooms, and they have an institutional quality kitchen, primarily because that, the building apparently is rated as a, you know, a community shelter, so if anything should happen in the community, people could come there and be fed institutionally.
Did that have, it had a kitchen in it, right?
Oh yeah, very, very elaborate. I've never seen a, a nicer commercial kitchen.
I also went and toured the same site, because it was not far from the Doylestown site when we went that day. And not only that, they had locker rooms, they had full showers, because it was rated as a shelter.
Right.
So I
Which is something we should keep in mind, with our building.
Well, I found, I didn't realize the cost here for that center was four and a half million dollars in 2018, and I, considering the commercial kitchen was, I mean, I feel like it's the size of this room.
Yeah, well, it was pretty good, yeah.
You know, it had two windows for service and for cleanup, I mean, it had a lot going on. And so to say that that number in 2018 encompassed that, and wouldn't be looking for a commercial kitchen, it seems reasonable, and I think more aligned with what, probably with the committee, having sat on the committee, kind of expects, price range-wise, and also expectation. But for, for what it's worth, you know, we spent some money on MKSD, for the general public to know, to kind of do our due diligence in both directions. If we raised the building, sold it off, and also, what's the maximum thing that we could actually achieve at what cost? And we all looked at it and said, wow, that's a high cost for maybe not, and maybe we don't need all of that. One question, though, I presume we wouldn't be able to accommodate a second floor.
No, they have no second floors, and this is on a slab, it's all on a slab.
I don't, I don't know if there's any prefab structure that could do that.
It's a very impressive building, let me tell you, it's a very impressive building.
Ben? By the way, I was a huge advocate for the second floor walking path.
Yeah.
I still am, but like, the second floor is really costly.
I get that, just, you may have already considered these, one, just, I come from a small town in like northeastern PA, and we had a rec center, and it was, I loved it, so I'm just, I'm really in favor of it, of the idea in general. And two, the one I had growing up, again, you might have already considered this, but they sold the naming rights of the building to help fund it. So, again, I'm sure that's come up, but if there's an opportunity to help offset some of the costs, plus the grant, if someone is able to, you know, weigh in on that, it might, it may not get you that pool or that second floor, but it might get a kitchen or something, that's all.
We have discussed the thinking.
Yeah, yeah, that, that was about half the kitchen, believe me.
All right, so, I'm sorry, I had to step out for a minute, maybe I missed it. So, how much thought and conversation was given to the idea of actually making the township-owned rec center that we presently own, but leased out to the Halligans? How much conversation was given to that? I know, actually, I'll pause and maybe wait for that.
Are you talking about using the Flower Town Country Club?
Yeah, converting the Flower Town Country Club with an ill-maintained pool and ill-maintained grounds, converting that, taking the lease back, having the township run that as a community center.
I think there was really talk of that.
Okay. So, I mean, I, I remember, I have like a little bit of a history written down in my notes. I remember at one point, there was a conversation when, this was still when Baird was on the board, that there was going to be an open space committee chaired, you know, with Jim and Suzie and Baird, and then that, but it was somehow, it was like a secret open space committee that needed to be private. And then, and then my notes say, nothing heard from open space committee. But then, all of a sudden, there was a township rec center committee, and it also had Baird and Jim and Suzie on that committee. So all of a sudden, like, the open space committee disappeared and went underground, and then reemerged as a township rec center committee. So how, can you refresh my recollection, because I don't have my notes with me? How did that happen?
The rec center and the open space committee have nothing to do with it.
Okay, so it was just, it was just coincidence at that time?
I don't even think Baird was on the rec center.
You're just
There's no, there's no power.
Okay.
I'm also in the, on the avenue, think our property, maybe. Also, no relation.
Okay. And then, and so how does the, I guess, originally the cash, cashed out? No, what's the gentleman, the developer that was going to develop the Windmore Fire Company? Who, over cash, thank you. All right, so, I know he was on the rec center committee at one point, because I remember you high-fiving him or something.
He's still on the committee.
Okay, so, oh, so he's still on the committee, so how does the decline of, or the, yeah, the diminished prospects for his development of the fire company, how does that align with what's going on on Willow Grove Avenue and the rec center?
I have no relation between the two.
Okay.
It's never come up with him being in our committee.
Okay, but the rec center that would have been across the street from his development, and right next door to his other development, not related at all?
Not related at all.
Okay, sure, okay.
That's it, you got it.
To clarify, there wasn't a secret open space committee, we just thought that it would be started with some commissioners to have those discussions, which we did, and I think we even spoke with the, at the same time, a synergy for the subcommittee of EAC coming forward, and we thought it'd be better that we spoke and kind of understood what the layout was, and then, of course, not to say that we didn't, you never heard from us, I think we just touched it up every once in a while. One of them, I will say, and we touched on this earlier regarding the institutional properties that could have green space that might be developable, one of the potential thoughts there of not yet having a public committee was trying to understand what the implications would be if you listed a bunch of private properties that you had an eye on, for example, and what that would really mean, and is that fair? Is that right? Is that appropriate for a township entity? At the same time, in that process, then, a group of folks gathered under opens, under EAC, and said, hey, we want to do that anyways, and I think that felt, for me, it felt different, and actually a relief, because I felt, you know, a little stressed about having to say that we're deining properties yet, without any kind of interaction with the community to have eyes on, and even still now, even seeing that list, I'm like, oh, I don't know, I don't know if that's appropriate, I don't know the best approach for this, and I think we're all working through that. So that was one thing. And then the rec center committee came up independently, and the members were, Jim Lee, myself, I believe, John Cobb was on there as well.
Okay, that's fine, so thank you.
I just, I just want to clarify, so that you
No, that's all right, I'll go back and check my notes. So, thank you for reminding me, though, because that brings us back to the 2005 list for open space. Now, Mike, how long have you worked for the township? When did you start here?
Uh, you were here in 97.
Ninety-seven, so you were here in 2005?
I was.
All right, so how do you feel about the fact that on that open space list, there is a 100% failure rate? There's a 0% success rate? How, how, how did that happen?
Mike, you don't have to answer that, we're not here to question Mike and give, ask his first feelings.
I actually was part of the open space committee, I was the staff liaison to that. And I can tell you that efforts were made to secure at least one of the properties, and there were negotiations with that landowner, and we had an appraisal, and we had an offer in, and we had funding from Montgomery County to acquire the property, and we were outbid, I think, I think we were probably used as leverage with the developer. And that can happen. We can only pay fair market value, they were willing to pay more. And so we lost that, that was the Borscht tract, that's one of the properties, I presume. Then in the case of the TC tract, that's another big one, I imagine that you're talking about, right?
Sure.
Okay, yeah, I mean, that
I, I mean, I remember that in conversation, I remember that, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I mean, that was, that was developed, I mean, I think it's one acre zoning is what it ended up being. There's 34 acres of land, and there's 34 homes, but half of it is dedicated to open space and undeveloped, and the homes are clustered together. So, you know, it, an argument could be made that there's partial open space and partial development.
Plus tank car.
Tank car, I don't know that that was even one of the priorities, but that ended up being secured for open space purposes. So, took something that was developed, and it's going to turn it into something that's more of an open space facility.
Right, the tank car boondoggle, we'll call it.
Why boondoggle?
It's been in process for 20 years, it's a brownfield, it's, anyway, it's well, it's well overdue.
We can call it the boondoggle.
We can call it the boondoggle.
It's not our boondoggle.
I don't know the official definition of boondoggle.
We've been diligently pursuing it, you know, we've been blocked by regulatory requirements on many occasions.
Okay.
So it's taken longer than we had all hoped, but it's, it's going to happen.
Are these the answers you want? All your questions seem to imply that you're very curious about wrongdoing and backseat deals, is there anything
Oh, no, I mean, I think, I think it's, I think it's, I mean, I think that, that someone would give you a list of developable open space, I definitely don't agree with that. Because that implies a level of good faith dealing that we actually have never seen from the commissioners.
Yeah, say it again, what do you have a problem with, the list?
There is no good, I know, but you'll have to wait your turn.
Can I ask a question? Those properties that list from 2005 were private properties, what would you expect the township to do?
At the time, there was a lot of, there was a lot more money for grants and open space, and I believe all the, most of those properties were actually developed in excess of what the local zoning called for at the time, so it wasn't that they were just developed in sync with what's going on in the surrounding township, they're actually overdeveloped as to what that zoning in that area was at the time. I think we can go back and check that.
So where's the point you're trying to get at, what's your recommendation?
Well, I mean, I, I'm just trying to figure out what, well, first of all, I am trying to figure out what's going on, but I'm also, I, I am upset, actually, that they, that there is like a lack of good faith from this board, and from the people that are involved in the decisions in this township.
So what is your recommendation?
My recommendation is more, well, actually, I was going to ask you, actually, how do we get better commissioners?
Elections.
Elections.
Elections, you can recruit people you think would be great enough.
Thanks for the idea, my understanding is, the way that the Democrats do it, it's sort of more like a selection. Actually, from your, the, your neighbor, the one across the street from you, who selected you?
He doesn't live across the street.
I know, it's like a couple Anyway, no, this, we're getting off on a tangent.
Do you have more, if you want to make a direct comment, do you have a recommendation?
I guess my, my question was, for my 0% success rate for preserving open space, how are we going to improve that in the future?
Well, it's 0%, there was, there was identified a few properties that did get developed, but then there's, we still have
I think there was like a list of 15 that were all developed.
We have a laundry list of undeveloped properties.
And there's absolutely no urgency, no hair on fire from this board at all. In fact, everything I heard from, from tonight was like, oh yeah, Carson Valley, but we're pretty sure we can't do anything about that. That's, that's the, that's the urgency that I'm getting.
You're at a meeting where one of the main agenda items was the creation of a dedicated open space committee to really act on these, you are aware of that, right?
Yeah, and along with the whole $1,000 that's been donated and matched by the township so far. It indicates a lack of seriousness. I would definitely not give any money to this township that's acted, that's acted in bad faith. I've been fighting for open space for 15 years, I know you're a developer, it's okay. It's okay, I know, I know you like to interrupt, that's a, that's a pattern that the Board of Commissioners in this township have a nasty habit on. Thank you for interrupting, you, no, you actually didn't get my comment.
We did get your comment, and I have some very
You actually didn't get my comment, you're just interrupting. I'm not filibustering, I'm just being interrupted by the township commissioners as the residents of this community are time and time again. You're, you're, I mean
We've let you speak, it likes, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Patrick.
Okay, well, I mean, I'm awaiting answers, I guess the answer is you have no answer. Okay, I, I'll wait, the answer is you have no answer.
We're satisfied with the dialogue, we accept your comments, thank you. And you've asked questions and given answers, I'm not sure what you're seeking here.
I have not actually gotten any decent answers.
Mike, Mike didn't give you, Mike didn't give you a full history of
I send, I send emails to Mike, and he chooses which ones he's going to answer. I ask him all the time questions, some he completely ignores, and others, he actually writes a little response to. So, when, when Jim says, Mike, you don't have to answer that question, you're just giving him more license to ignore valid questions from the township residents. So, I mean, you guys are not doing a good job.
Noted, thank you.
Thank you.
I reject the
Any other public comment?
I would reject to answer, but I would reject that there has been any sort of bad faith or strange dealings that I've witnessed.
Thad Kirk, Surrey Road in Orland, I would just like to commend the, the board and the manager on the job they're doing at this township as a, as a concerned resident of the township, thank you.
Thank you.
We were, yes.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Will we move on to the next item?
I actually have one more question, what was that video that we heard in the beginning of the meeting?
Somebody, when I, when I logged in, I didn't have all the security levels.
You didn't have all the security levels on, so we were hearing someone else's video, or was that your video?
We were hearing somebody else's, yes.
Okay.
You know me, and even though we all don't agree all the time, you can only do the best you can with what you've got. And you cannot do everything that all of us want you to do, because it's an impossibility. And that's it.
Good, James.
Um. So, so will the rec reach, or the, assuming this is the desire of our colleague, of my colleagues here, would the rec center, will we continue to meet and would it just be a new, a different conversation like in your experience?
I think if you want us, you know, as a staff, Emily, myself, Craig, whoever, to, to meet with MKSD and Oil or whoever, you know, try and get some better numbers or what we might be looking at and, and what we might be able to attain in terms of like additional parking and some flexibility in the design. I think we come back to you and then I would continue to, to meet as a committee. There's just gonna be some changes that are, that are gonna be discussed.
Will we have to put in a different type of bid because it's a different type of project or it just continues on now?
As professional services at this point, you already have them engaged.
So I would advocate.
Gone out to bid for a full project by any.
Just one.
Well, I would advocate for that, uh, that avenue to go back to them and say, let's take a look at this scaled back uh, project and then come back to the numbers and come back to the point we are now, which is, okay, this is kind of what we want. We're in support of it. Let's move forward.
So wait for the numbers and then when those numbers come in, uh, we'll recall the, the committee, basically.
Right. So I don't think, they probably don't, probably don't meet in September because probably have that done. But I would say in the month of September, we should have that.
All right.
Yeah.
I would think.
If you were, i- i- if they were to give you a revised proposal, um, for the design development phase, which would be the next phase, um, and you engage them to, to go forward with that. You've only authorized them to go to a certain point, which we've hit and you've stopped.
But we, we could be ready to do that in September.
Yes, yes. And then October, you know, they could have a meeting with the committee. Um, so, okay, you know, here's what we did in Doylestown in terms of the size of that facility. Is this something that you think lays out well on paper?
Great. Just want to understand the process. Thank you.
Anybody else have a, to bring a thought on that or? Julie?
Joy Berkey, I have to leave, but I would like to speak on behalf of the character of everybody up here that I've worked with. And, uh, we've not always agreed, but I've never felt I dealt with anybody in bad faith or that any of you dealt with me in bad faith. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Um, on that matter, I've been at a camp- campaign fundraiser for Susie and I stand by my comments. I've been at Ed's house for a campaign fundraiser for Art. I stand by my comments. I've hosted a fundraiser for Pete and I stand by my comments. I fought for Jim Lee to be, even be able to run. I fought hard for him. He let me down. And I stand by my comments. Doing a bad job. Brendan May, I don't know, man, you, you just popped in out of nowhere. And I, I had better hope, I had better hopes for you. Um, uh, but, yeah, Beth McNamara. If I only remembered that sign on the corner on Hawes Lane. Anyway, um, no, um, so I had another question about how the township lawsuits go in and how much money we've spent on it. When can I ask that question?
On what township?
On, uh, the, the township lawsuit, the police department versus the township. How much money's been wasted on that so far?
Uh, yeah, that's all settled and I reject your.
Well, how much money did it?
Question about the week.
It's a quick question then. How much money did the township spend on it? Period. Bottom line.
Was our total number?
I don't know. It was announced at a public meeting, I think, a few weeks ago. I don't know. It's off the top of my head.
But seven fifty, seven fifty, more than five hundred?
We can get you the public meeting where all those details were discussed.
Okay, great. All right.
Actually, it's on one.
Yeah, but I'll point out exactly.
Okay. And it's done?
Yes.
Good.
I'd also like to reject that that was wasteful.
Yeah.
That's, I don't think that's a appropriate characterization.
All right. Well, uh, uh, Patrick, the three lawyers in this room right now, besides you.
We're not having a back and forth discussion on every single.
We, we could, we could definitely, we've disagreed, agreed to disagree about whether it was a wasteful lawsuit.
Fine. Great.
Yeah. Thanks.
Uh, all right. Tab A fireworks display for North Hills Country Club. Uh, this has been a recurring request on an annual basis for them to uh, be allowed to have a fireworks display, uh, as part of Labor Day weekend. Uh, normal controls in place that Mike laid out in terms of insurance and that sort of thing. So um, anyone have any comments or questions on that? Okay. Vote on that Wednesday. Uh, Tab B, we talked about the, um, small wireless cell facility uh, ordinance. So we will have a public hearing on that on Wednesday and then we will also conduct a vote that Wednesday.
I, I have some questions on that ordinance. Is it time to discuss that now or can? Um. So understanding that this is, uh, and, and Andy, we got this, but basically this wording is, uh, uh, pro forma from the, the, uh, the state regarding the ord- the ordinance, how the ordinance is basically supposed to work. And I, I basically understand that.
I would say, yeah.
Um, well, one of the things that I thought was lacking in all of this is, is enforcement. I mean, there is some discussion about if, if these guys go out of business, you know, we have, we have, they have so many days in which to remove their material, uh, you know, uh, and I guess assume take down the poles and things like that. But there's, but there's no, but there's no, there's no guts to it. There's no, there's no bond that they have to post in order, you know, for, for us to be comfortable that they just won't walk away. Have you seen any other language in, in, in other ordinances that speaks to some kind of a guarantee or a bond or, I mean, you know, you could, I mean, how many years ago was it that we had another company come out and they put all those things on the poles and uh, you know, they, it never happened. And I, I think it was early wifi and they hang it, they hung up there for years.
I don't recall.
Okay.
No.
I believe you, but I don't know. Okay. All right. Okay.
I have not seen any, any kind of bonding or security requirements in other ordinances and it's.
I mean, is that, is that something the board would think it would be worthwhile to try and, and ask for? Or is it just useless because this is, this is basically already settled, settled documentation or lack of a better word?
Are you saying something different than this within sixty days of suspension or revocation?
Oh yeah, they talk about it, but then there's no enforcement. I mean, there's no mechanism to fall, if they, if they just do nothing.
Other than you'd have to go after, after them for the cost of the.
Yeah, but they've gone out of bankrupt. They, they've, they've gone bankrupt and there's nothing you, you know.
Yeah. I would, I would say most of the providers are probably pretty big companies, you know, the Crown Castles and the Verizes and things like that. I think the smaller companies, maybe they're not going to get in the small wireless facility business, but I have not seen any kind of bonding or financial security requirements.
Well, I mean, we, I mean, we have the.
You do have the right of way management fee.
Right. And we have the civil citations that we can issue.
Correct.
That gives us a.
Your traditional enforcement methods as opposed to financial security.
Uh-huh. And get a judgment. Yeah. But, but still, there's no, there's no guarantee. You get a judgment. It's great, but you know, if there's nothing backing it up.
What's your, what's your concern? I mean, worst case scenario is abandoned, right?
These are, these are not going to be insignificant, uh, you know, events. I mean, they're going to be big telephone poles and there's gonna have a antenna on the, the top and big refrigerator sized thing hanging off the side of it. I mean, if these guys go belly up or whatever, you know, so what, they, they could just let, they could be there forever.
I think it says after a hundred and twenty days of abandonment, right?
Yes.
That the township then would, they could take it down. I know that that puts the onus and the financial cost.
Yeah, yeah.
It does. It, I agree with you. There's not really an effect to it, but there is, that's, well, I had it right.
Oh yeah, yeah. They're supposed to do it, you know, but a lot of people are supposed to do stuff that they never do.
Okay. Let, let, let me just, hold on. I, I now remember. I just want to draw your attention to this paragraph. Um.
What page?
It's, uh, it's in section F. It's number six.
For six?
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah.
That's what Beth was saying. Township preserves the right unless prohibited by law. I don't, I don't know that they're prohibited at this point, but to require a wireless provider to provide financial security to the township sufficient to cover the costs for the removal of, of the small wireless facilities if such use is discontinued or abandoned.
Oh, so.
So there's an opportunity to do that right in here. Sorry.
How would we do that?
When they would have to come in for a permit for these to be part of the permit process.
So we would ask for a bond?
Wireless provider shall submit an estimate of the removal cost to the township engineer for review and approval of the same. The financial security shall remain in place until the small wireless facility is removed. So yeah, you get an off, it'd almost be like a development project. You get a cost estimate for the removal. Township engineer would look at it.
Yep.
He'd say that's a sufficient amount and you would ask the wireless provider to post something.
It depends on the project, right? So if you're going on, if you're co-legging on a existing pole, then the removal of the pole really isn't considered.
Correct.
Versus a new pole.
Because it's co-locating on an existing pole. Yeah. So it would fluctuate depending on the type of installation.
Yeah, yeah. It's, okay. So you, you think there is adequate protection? You just have to ask for it?
I think so. Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Okay.
So we set up an escrow account?
Yeah, yeah. Or, or yeah, for a bond or just get a bond or a general something to bond, right?
So you're saying we could, instead of reserve the right, shouldn't be will required or something?
Will.
Well, it says may require.
Yeah, I mean, a, a, any kind of change in this is gonna, and the smallest change is gonna require this to be re-advertised.
I think you, you.
And that allows us with the may require.
Yeah, correct.
And the engineer can, have discretion. So a project that's not necessarily a new pole, uh, I mean, if, if the cost of removal is so low, is it even worth going through that legal documentation? Whereas versus a bigger scale project that might have a cost of.
Okay. Okay. Well, that's good. And, and there's no way, there's no place in here that I could see. And maybe it's in the, the larger ordinance or, or larger ordinance that we would require them to provide any insurance for which we would be the beneficiary of if, God forbid, something happens, you know? Is that, are we covered, Andy, someplace else for insurance with regard to?
I don't believe there's an insurance requirement in here. No.
No, no, there's, there is, I didn't say.
Other than the fact that, you know, they, they have, there's an indemnification in here.
Well, is there an existing ordinance?
Probably.
Is there that?
I don't, I don't believe.
One existing entities requirement?
The only one we have is for the cable companies.
Right.
Under franchise agreements.
Right.
So we're, we're kind of, we're kind of naked on the, uh, liability here if something happens.
There's a demarcation of it, I mean.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Okay.
But there's no insurance requirement.
No insurance requirement. No. And we, we wouldn't, before we would allow construction or the, or the, uh, you know, put the new pole in, we would uh, in the normal course of how we do business, wouldn't ask them for thousands of insurance guarantees.
I think there would be insurance for the, for the construction component of it.
Yeah.
Building permit process.
Uh-huh.
Have obtained a building permit. Correct.
But ongoing.
Ongoing.
Ongoing. Not, not, you know.
Correct.
So on, so, so if in, in five years or ten years or something, somebody comes up to the, to the microphone and says, well, these things are causing me extreme headaches. Yeah. I, I think they should be removed. How, how are we covered for something like that or?
Would our, would our insurance company covers? I, I don't know the answer to that question off the top of my head.
We also don't, we also don't have.
Is it a covered claim?
We don't have the authority to.
I don't think we would remove them unless we were compelled to remove them by some sort of legal writ or process. And if so, the cell tower provider will indemnify us for that cost.
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
We also don't have the authority not to allow them.
I, I, I think the, the health, the health.
Say not allow them. I just, I just, you're saying just, just cover your ass if you're gonna.
I believe the health issues are all regulated by the federal government anyway, in terms of, of their FCC approval of these facilities. So
Okay.
I think, you know, liability would flow back that way too, to the extent that there is any. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. It says the wireless provider shall indemnify and hold the, hold the township and its office, the employees, harmless to get any points, laws and judgment, fault, things expensive. These or any other damages caused by the act error omission of the wireless provider or its office. Okay.
He too.
So we're comfortable? Okay.
Those are, those are.
Oh, they're comfortable.
Oh, okay. Of course. Yes. You can never be comfortable. But, uh, okay. And there's, and there's, and there's an actual, actual, uh, uh, prohibition for these things to be generated by solar, uh, uh, using solar power for generation. I found that interesting. They, they don't want them solar powered. It's, I just, yeah.
I was wondering why that was in there.
Yeah, I think it's, I think, I think you see it in a lot of these ordinances that are, that are there in terms of standard practice.
Okay.
It's just another piece of equipment, I think, that could potentially add to what you're seeing visually.
I was wondering if it was the size.
Size, yeah.
They're, they'd have to be pretty big for the power to, to pick up. The only thing I think of is if, if it's critical infrastructure, that people are relying on that cell tower to make nine-one-one calls. If you've had two months of cloudy days and you make.
Yeah, well, that's true. Yes, yes, yes.
And that, that would be a reason why that's, it'd have to be hardwired. Doesn't mean you couldn't have salt backup.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Or they may have batteries in the machine. Yeah.
Right. Remember the intent from the FCC was to remove barriers to these things.
Right.
Being proliferated.
Okay. Those are all, those are all my comments.
Very good.
Yeah.
Always thoughtful, Peter.
Oh.
Any other questions or comments on that? Yeah. All right. Finally, we're to the report of the township manager.
Go through, uh, twenty twenty-six budget. So budget memos are out to all department heads and uh, their budget requests are due to Craig and I by the twenty-second of August. We have a special meeting scheduled for September seventeenth with the three fire companies, the ambulance association and the planning commission will be invited. Um, that will be on the seventeenth of September. And we have a budget workshop on October fifteenth. Those two are special meetings. They both begin at seven o'clock. And you'll have a budget presentation as part of your November twelfth business meeting. And then the budget hearing and adoption will be at your December meeting. So just wanted to kind of make that, that out there so you can mark your calendars accordingly. Uh, we have a pension meeting tomorrow with C biz and your actuary. The actuary will go over the biennial of that valuation of the three defined benefit plans. Uh.
On Wednesday.
You need a Wednesday, right?
Wednesday. Yeah, I'm sorry. Wednesday. On, yeah. It's not twelve yet.
Yep. Getting close.
Uh, highway resurfacing, uh, projects, um, heard earlier today from Tim. Uh, milling projects or milling work started on Friday of last week. They continue today over in the Northwood section. Uh, they're gonna be in Windmore tomorrow and then on Wednesday, they're gonna start paving over at Erdheim. I'll just kind of follow up in that same order. Uh, we also finished our, uh, spot milling and patching program uh, that we do in-house with the public works department. Uh, that's all wrapped up and we continue to do, uh, line painting at the intersections. The signalized ones are all outsourced and we have our long line painting that'll start once the, the surfacing program is done. Um, landscaping equipment, um, gave you an update on, um, our experience with, uh, the steel power equipment that was loaned to us for a three-week period, um, July fifteenth to August one. Um, some of the tools worked better than others. They all suffered from relatively short, um, lifespan on the batteries, um, for the work that we do. I'll give you an example of one of the, uh, the days that we had Sandy Hill Road closed in its entirety so that we could prepare the road for, um, the annual road resurfacing program. Um, we brought every piece of equipment that they gave us and every battery that they gave us out there and, um, it, it, none of them lasted. We had to revert back to.
Yeah, well, it was hot as hell too.
It, it was.
Yeah. And, and the batteries don't do, you know, don't do well in extremes like that. Yeah, they don't do.
They do not. Uh, but we can't pick and choose what they were gonna work and not work. So.
How long did they last?
Uh, it depended on the piece of equipment and what you, task you were doing. Um, the blowers, like, you know, the.
Blowers are terrible.
Like an hour?
No, they aren't even close to an hour. Yeah. Some of them were as short as twenty minutes, um, with the battery.
The heat, the heat.
And I thought it was, yeah, it was interesting with how they overheated.
They do.
And then you're trying to cool them down in the air conditioning of a truck.
Right.
And it's like.
Yeah, it was a vicious circle there. Yeah.
Counteracting what you're trying to achieve. It didn't make a whole lot of sense. Um, so uh, our, our recommendation is to kind of like stay the course with the gas powered equipment for now, but we'll keep an eye out. Um, the hedge trimmer works good. We have to replace our hedge trimmer. We'll get one another. All right. Um, so.
That's totally, that's a bummer, you know, but it, you know, um, I, I, I think it's a good investment. I I think it's a good investment, even if it costs more. If we go electric where we can, um, but at the same time. There's a limit to that too. So if the guys aren't functioning and doing.
I mean, they'll get better, they'll get better.
They will get better, they'll get better.
So.
Let's keep an eye on it, let's.
Wait another year, two years, who knows?
Uh. I was, you know, pulling for hoping that, uh, that was a good option now.
We went to the Hall Marion Seminar and talked to the steel guy and he was willing to bring all that equipment out. I figured, oh. It's standby stuff and, you know, even afterwards, you know. Gene and Ian were talking to him with along with a couple of the guys and he's like, yeah, we we've heard that before, you know? And it's it's a safety mechanism on the batteries.
Yes, yeah, they, yeah, they don't want to blow up, no.
May I take this opportunity to suggest, um, maybe a relook of, uh. Being better models of better land management practices that are greener in in lieu of investing in these.
So we we talked last month about trying to convert some of our more passive parks to more of a meadow-like.
Right.
Condition, which is something that we'll do and that'll reduce the amount of mowing that we have to do. Um. I know you you brought up the leaf blowing, uh, in the past as something that we could cur- curtail and do. And and that's fine. And we try and minimize the amount of leaf blowing we do. So we clean up each park once. You know, we don't do it multiple times. Like some people clean their lawn every month, every week. Uh, the problem is in some areas where we enjoy residential properties and that person cleans up their lawn every week. We get, you know, complaints that, you know, we're not cleaning up the.
You look shabby.
Because the leaves are blowing across onto their lawn all the time, so.
Or in spaces where there's trails and paths that people walk on.
Yeah. Yeah, so I mean, but but your point's well noted.
Yeah, I would just say, just a reminder, um, maybe, I don't know if it's. Part of the end of year update or when we come to budget time, just a reminder of maybe what public works did to curtail or whatever. Maybe there's a reduction in number of hours that we release, maybe there's a increase in meadows and then we can note it and. And know that we're tracking them somewhere. Use your discretion as to how and when that's reported, but that might be helpful too. You know, we heard tonight a lot of interest and concern, uh, about habitat preservation. And so whatever we can do, this could be a good reminder. Uh, despite the fact that, right, it's a bummer, it doesn't work.
But it works, they just don't work well.
For for, I would say for.
I think if you have a, an eight thousand square foot yard and and you have, you know, a Saturday, you go out there and do it and you can charge it up and. Move to another little job at your house, it it they weren't good. I have, you know, they.
I haven't agreed.
Yeah. Yep, um, police entry level, um, exam, we had that on August second. We don't have any vacancies at present. Um, there were hundred forty-two individuals that were signed up to take the test. I think they actually had about a hundred that actually showed up. Um, and of that hundred, I think twenty of them failed the physical agility. So they got down to like eighty candidates. So not real optimistic about that, that we're gonna get a whole lot of. People into that. Just so we don't have any vacancies in the moment. Um, still a little note about national night now, was on August fifth. It was. Nice night. I think we had a larger turnout.
Oh, it was well attended. I I do have one complaint though.
Ice cream?
You didn't get ice cream. Yeah, seven fifteen, the ice cream was all gone. Seven fifteen.
I think the.
The event went to nine o'clock.
I I I don't disagree. I was.
What what happened there?
I think we have a lot of people who wanted a bowl of ice cream instead of a cone and the bowls hold more ice cream than the cone.
Well, I was very long early in the night for ice cream.
It it was non-stop.
Yeah, it was very well attended. Everyone's having a good time.
Yeah.
I thought.
We talked about an immigration statement earlier, if you want to continue that or do that later on. Uh, City Run Park, um, Emily was contacted by a company called Video Ray. They manufacture underwater drones. And, um, remote vehicles that that go down there, um, and do search and rescue stuff. Um, they wanted to know if they could utilize the quarry for, um, testing of their equipment and. You may or may not recall, but we have an agreement with Navmar Applied Techtop Technologies. Um, Navmar, um. Was the company that did all the testing for the United States Navy when the Navy owned the property. And they continue to utilize the facility, but they rent it from us for a thousand dollars a month. And they're there very infrequently, uh, but they'd like to be able to continue to have access to it.
And they're a private company, so they were a, they were a vendor, so to speak.
Yep.
Of the military.
Correct.
But they're a private institution, okay?
Um, and we kind of continued to allow them to continue. They do some marine testing. Um, so, um. The 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 question for you is, uh, do you want to entertain a similar arrangement with Video Ray? I don't, we we need to find out how often they want to utilize the facility. Uh, Craig's familiar with the machinery that they have.
Oh, yeah.
They're actually based out of what.
I'll say they're out of pot, they're out of pot stones. And they have the underwater roads, you can get a, a local cord. Probably up to a thousand feet. Um, they use them in both commercial and military applications. You can put, uh, grappling hooks on them. You can, you you can put all kinds of different tools on them to to do under underwater recovery.
Their website says they were on the coast of Concordia, um.
Mm hmm.
When they looked at that.
Oh, really? Yeah, wow.
Uh, so I mean, if you want us to reach out, they'll like, as of right now, we said no, you know, we don't allow it, um. You know, if we were, it would be under a more formal arrangement, but we need to find out how often, you know, they want to use it because I don't want to take away from the park experience.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, but it's once in a while.
Use.
Are are they local? Like where where are they based?
Yes.
Oh, they're out of Boston. Do you know where they where they do this work now?
Um, they have, they have a smaller pool in their facility they use for shallow, for shallow, uh, things, but they also. They travel all around the world and do trading all the way around the world, but this is more on their, uh, product development, all types of skills.
Okay.
It could be a division.
Okay.
So we'll find out some more info and of course we'll refer to park and practice and what they think about it. We have a little bit of confirmation that it'll ultimately make us ready to go.
How how often does Navmar go?
Very, very infrequently. I mean, if they're once every, go three months.
Okay.
That's a lot.
And do they tell you when they're gonna show up?
No, they just kind of go.
You show up?
Yeah.
Perhaps that should be a change or with with you company.
With the new company, yeah, for sure.
Some reasonable notes.
That might be important contact, yeah.
Right.
Uh. LVL Engineering, um, LVL Engineering is the successor to the Shane James. Uh, they filed for bankruptcy. We filed, um, claim, uh, for the amount that the attorney general felt that they overbuild us. Um, they in turn filed a claim for the amount that we never paid them once the news broke it. Uh, we're the victim of that overbuilding scheme. Um, so we have mediation, uh, upcoming that I'll have to attend along with somebody from Andy's office. Uh, to represent us, so. Um. They owe us a heck of a lot more money than we owe them, so they pay us that one, which we would be willing to pay. We have it there. Uh, then Community Day, new new developmental community day. Um, there there may be a couple of people in the Erdheim Civic Association. Who are interested in organizing it.
So good, good.
I think Mike Dillarans at the point. Step off the door.
Okay.
They've been vendors there in the past.
Yeah, they've had a big presence there in the past.
That junior?
Yes.
Great.
That's it.
All right, awesome. Thank you, Mike. Any questions on the bill listing? All right, um, zoning, uh, hearing board notice, we'll make a, um, announcement. Uh, what's on the docket for those next meeting? Any comments, questions on that? All right, Parks and Rec Committee, we had a. Letter of, uh, consideration from a new student, potential student rep to the Parks and Rec Committee, if you recall. We just honored, uh, Asher last month, that last month he was a junior. I think it was last month.
Last one.
All right, so, um, we have a copy of his letter, which was extremely well-written and a resume.
Yeah, the only thing I noticed is that it looks like he's gonna be a sub. And not a junior.
And we, in our posting, said it should be a junior senior.
Senior senior.
Okay.
And I think that was mostly, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Suzie, that was mostly because we thought maturity level would be a little bit. Greater, um, and the junior was just so you could have some consistency, junior to senior year.
I think it was just to have the two-year, you know, consistent two-year amount of time.
But if this person is sure, pretty.
Mature.
Just based on his writing, I think he's more mature than I am. So.
Yeah, I'm not sure it was all that limited, I think, getting, maybe we'll just call it high school.
Yeah.
Uh, and and that has nothing to do with, uh, our evaluation of the maturity per se, just, uh, the fact that anyone raises their hand, appreciate it. And say, any committee, any student who wants to apply, continue to do so.
So you've had interactions with him? He's he's come to several meetings?
Uh, I don't recall, but, um, it doesn't mean I I didn't.
I think it's been, he says it's been the break of the parking rack advisory.
So he may just been there either.
He might have been present, yeah, I don't recall, but.
Okay.
So if you want to compete advertised, you want to appoint them, you want to meet them?
I would say what what we did last night, meet meet them and give them a formal interview. I think part of it is to give them the full process as we did for. As we do for all the adults as well and, um.
Yeah. Invite them to our September workshop meeting.
I would say do that, sure. Great.
So, uh, would there be any restrictions that, I mean, this young man is not eighteen?
Well, anyone's gonna be not close to graduation may not be.
Restrictions.
There's no, there's no, we have no issues with that.
And when Ash was starting, I don't think he was.
He was eighteen.
I didn't know when he was a.
I mean, just, you know, just from the legal standpoint, you know.
Intern.
Interns.
Student.
Not voting, right?
Yeah, student representatives volunteer.
Yeah, no, he wouldn't be a voter.
He's just part.
No, no, the.
Volunteer.
Student representative.
Junior supervisor.
I'm sure. All right, Tepa G, Friends of Mermaid Park. Um, we have a group that is interested in ongoing, uh. Volunteer maintenance with the park and we have a draft agreement that memorializes that. Any questions or comments?
I think as long as legal doesn't have a problem, I think it's great to have volunteers.
Yeah, we looked at all this. I think we even followed a format from something the township did in the past. Am I correct, Mike?
Yeah.
I just kind of made a few modifications, but, um, yeah.
All right, great. And the, uh, the group that wanted to do the park, um, veteran, that's all done. We. We memorialize that agreement?
That, yeah.
They were seeking a, um, a grant.
A grant.
Correct.
They wouldn't hear back from me until the fall.
Yeah.
Was that the the Korean War scenario or veterans?
Uh, adjacent behind.
It's behind it, right.
All right, uh, rec center master plan, we we covered. Uh, any questions or comments on the recycling report? All right, um, open space, D A C, we covered. Solar project, we covered. Pen dot winter maintenance agreement. Um, this is pretty self-explanatory, um. Is, was the current one expiring?
Yep.
Is it five years?
Mm hmm.
Okay. Anything you want to add on that? Any details?
No, the rate went up, um, actually, um, the rate went up pretty significantly in two thousand and eighteen. Um, because the, actually locally, the Montgomery County Public Works Association sort of lobbied Penn Dot and said, you know, you pay us by the lane mile. Uh, but a lot of these state roads have got like center turn lanes and they've got wide shoulders and those kinds of things and we have to clear all of that. We should get paid for that. So they actually like gave a new classification, um, for certain roads that that have those types of. Wide shoulders and other, uh, features and, um. We got a nice bump in that, like Church Road, for example, has a lot of that. Apron over in certain spots, so, um, yeah, so it's it's a, it's a decent amount, um. And we're seventy-three thousand five hundred and eighty-one dollars, um, for year one, and then it goes up two percent for each year. Uh, the agreement. And then there's a five-year renewal, but it's one, five one-year renewals. So you don't have to take it if you don't want afterwards, but.
If we don't take it, what if they have to?
They have the subcontractor come out. And the problem is they and they don't want to do that. Um. We do it better because we're here and we do it more frequently. Um, and quite frankly, we're gonna get the calls anyway if they're not cleared well, so, um, might as well take ownership of it and just do it.
How much of a bump is that? Seventy-three thousand five eighty versus the prior year?
Uh, it's like two percent over last year, but again, in two thousand and eighteen, we had a big bump.
Just curious, uh, on border roads like St. Francine Bowl, is it half seas of the city or how is that?
Yeah, we do the whole thing. We get and we get paid for the whole lane mile. And, you know, like Church Road, just because it's, um, more convenient for us to do the turnaround in White Marsh. We go all the way down in the White Marsh turnaround and then come back up, uh, and then stop the whole route. No, well, no, that pays us. Um, they just want to make sure that whoever, uh, they contract with to do, White Marsh doesn't do their their state routes.
Exactly.
Uh, they contract them. Same thing with, uh, Pennsylvania Avenue and Upper Dublin, like sometimes we'll get it, sometimes they'll get it, but. We just think it works.
We'll stay.
All right, any other questions, comments there? All right, we'll vote on that Wednesday. Uh, Black Horse Inn, uh, do we want to talk about that here or or executive? Or is the lease there?
Just a new lease.
Yes. So Sandra Worthington is one of our tenants. Um, she's in the second floor, south. Um, suite, and she's been there for a long time. Uh, she's willing to re-up for an additional one year at nine fifty a month. She's currently paying nine hundred a month, so, um, seems like that's, she's been a good tenant.
Take it.
Um, and then the other suite, um, which is suite F, um, that's the office to the rear there. Um, Michael and Jennifer Cathy, they're relatively new tenants. They allowed their lease to expire at the end of July. Uh, Jennifer's having some health issues, unfortunately. Um, so, uh, we need to find a new tenant. And, um, we have an agreement with, um, Dan Helwig before you to authorize that we, um. Have him listed on a multiple listing agreement through the end of the year. And he thinks he can market it for a thousand, but I think you'd probably be closer to nine hundred to nine fifty, which is where we. Kathy's nine hundred.
Correct. All right, uh, Flower Town Country Club, we covered. That's it for the agenda items.
I have two things. First thing is Ridge Pike is going, the newly repaved Ridge Pike, widened and repaved, Ridge Pike is going to get. Milled and resurfaced again.
What?
Wow, yeah, the, um.
Just a part of it, not the whole thing, right? Just our section.
Our section.
Our section, yeah, but not the whole.
Oh, not the whole.
Not the whole thing that they did.
Well, yeah.
Every, all that.
Section. They, they, it didn't meet the skip resistance that was in the spec. And they didn't notice it until months later when they were doing the reconciliation of all the tickets that came. Uh, they did the plan. So I think the county and, um.
Were there accidents because of it?
No, no. But that is what was in the spec and the county is, oh, well, I I have a suspicion that it's a Penn Dot thing because they want to turn the herd over to Penn Dot.
So Penn Dot reviewed it and saw something missing.
Somebody reviewed it.
Somebody flagged it, right, yeah.
Um, so that's gonna get done. Soon. So.
How long?
About that.
Made that tea?
No cost to the county.
It just any convenience.
It's pretty simple. Mill and overlay, I'll probably take a couple of nights. Uh, then the other thing is, um, a couple of months ago, um, told you about Aqua's plans to, uh, put in that PFOS treatment. Facility at both the Flower Town and the Orland Wells. Uh, we got a notice, um, from them, um, pursuant to, um. State planning requirements, um, that, you know, they're gonna move forward with the project. And just wanted to confirm that we had discussed with you and you weren't gonna treat it as a land development. Uh, but that we were gonna require stormwater management, um, and building permits for everything. But if you want to change your mind and you want us to go to the planning commission or anything, now's the time to sort of step up and.
The only concern I have is those are really big units.
They're tall.
I mean, they're gonna look like.
They're tall, yeah.
It's tall.
So, you know, is there screening that we, I I would say, said it, the planners get their two cents.
So the, um, the the one at the Flower Town wellhouse, they're going to put landscaping around it to to shield that from the residential property to the rear. The one in Orland is in an industrial district that's kind of buffered by, bordered by two other industrial uses.
Mm hmm.
Um, there's not really a whole lot of green in that area or or. Area to put any landscaping in, but, um.
Like the existing structures.
Yeah, they're adding two.
And they're big tubs, they're big tubs.
Pretty big.
Yeah. Senator Plante, I just had to deflect. Let them look at.
Yeah, I I mean, I think we'll go, it's fine.
Yeah.
What an help.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all it up.
You have any other items? A reminder that Wednesday is our last summer attire business meeting. Down in the back of the ties in September. Unless you want to go all year round.
See you, Ron.
See you, Ron.
Bye bye, thank you.
Uh Wednesday, yes. Um I do have a an executive item for Andy. What's going on with the Orland Market?
Uh continued, continued until uh July.
Okay.
Yeah.
Was there a a consideration to that settlement, so to speak?
Yeah, to to be discussed, I think, yeah, future time.
All right. I do have it.
Currently continued, yeah.
And what, and Mike, what's going on with the uh tree or lack of tree or move along with Avenue?
So I I think I mentioned earlier today, um John Fennell from Rep Nelson's office reached out and said that Rep Nelson was gonna have a meeting with Pendot today. Do we have any issues? I said, yeah. First and foremost, there's a pile of tree debris on the corner of Pleasant Little Grove
Right.
that apparently Pendot agreed to get rid of.
Well, they did, though.
According to the homeowner.
Oh, okay.
And I've been working with, well, Jack is no longer with Rep Nelson's office, and he went to law school. Uh but he was trying to get a firm deed out of Pendot, and all that Pendot would commit to is, yes, we agree to take it. Uh but they have not gotten there yet. I said it's a site obstruction, it's gotta, they gotta get rid of it.
Oh, yeah, so we we're issuing uh violation, Charlie.
So we put them on notice.
Yeah.
And he asked for an extension, so because he said Pendot is willing to remove it.
Okay.
So we're trying to work with them, because we just want. So.
Good, all right. Uh so we are, have a couple of gen-, um we have an executive item, so we do need to clear the room in the public. Thank you for coming. Anybody still on Zoom, Craig? All right, folks, thanks for coming, uh those of you online. Uh we're going to executive session, we will not be back, so thank you for coming.